Okay, we'll go ahead and call the August 2nd meeting of the Slough and Planning Commission to order. Can you confirm that the Kansas Open Meetings Act has been met?
Yes, I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of the meeting was provided.
Thank you.
Dean?
I'm going to call the role. Commission Member Gilmore. Commission Member Farber.
Here.
Commission Member Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Sell.
Here.
Vice Chair Olson. Chair Hay. So, we do have four of the currently appointed seven members to the Planning Commission present this afternoon. That constitutes a quorum. And then, just for everyone's understanding, in order to pass any motion or action today, that's going to require the votes of three of the four of you. Anything that is a two-to-two tie or deadlock would be a failure to approve because it lacks the three votes. And even if it was an action or a motion to deny something, a two-to-two vote is simply a failure to approve. And so, to move anything forward, all of the items that are on your agenda today can be passed with a majority of the quorum, which is, the quorum is four and a majority is three. So, that's the way that motions and voting would be conducted today. So, I'll turn it back over to Acting Chair Mike Sell, and you can move on to consideration of the minutes.
Okay. So, everybody had a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting? Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes of the July 5th, 2022 meeting.
And the second?
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. New business, public hearing items.
We have a number of public hearing items scheduled for you today. And those would start out with item 3.1, which is a conditional use permit application. And that application is filed by The Point LLC. And they're requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow a drinking establishment with an outdoor food and beverage serving area in the C4 Central Business District. The subject property is Lot 80 on 7th Street in the original town of Salina. And the tenant space address is 157 North 7th. And that's the property that's right across the street from us on the south side of Ash and 7th. You should all have at your places here an email that staff received right before the meeting. So, we put that at your places. One of the things that we pointed out here in our report is that if you are a tenant and you are seeking to do a daycare or some other conditional use or change the zoning status of a piece of property, you have to have the written consent of the property owner. We were lacking that in this case. The owner, actual owner of the property did not, name did not appear on the application, nor any contact information. So, we sent them a copy of the, that Point. And so, that has been provided. Mr. Charles Alt-Dool, who is the author of the email at your place, is the owner of the property across the street and has provided that. So, the owner indicates that the tenants, The Point, has the permission to do that. We've also provided you with some information about the origins of the conditional use permit requirement for drinking establishments in the downtown area that arose out of some issues that occurred in 2000 and 2001. And since that time, the conditional use permit has been used as the mechanism for approving or disproving drinking establishments. And part of the rationale for that is that local authorities and cities do not have the authority to repeal someone's liquor license, but they do have the authority to repeal a conditional use permit. So, the conditional use permit kind of serves as a local substitute for local control over a drinking establishment license. So, the property across the street is in a building that we, our records show was built in 1924. In most of its life, it was, the tenant space we're talking about was the site of Wood Fashion Cleaners. Wood Fashion Cleaners closed in 2003. In 2006, Mr. Jim Raven Camp purchased the building, and he refurbished the building to create a number of tenant spaces facing Ash Street. He made some minor renovations to this space. But this is the largest space in the building, has about 1,200 square feet. And if you're up close looking at it, you can tell that it is a former filling station because it has the remnants of the overhead doors that were there for the garage. Most of them have been filled in with windows or some other system. So, that work occurred in 2006. And the property was purchased at an unknown time by Mr. Charles Alt-Dool, a local attorney who has spaces there. So, in the, this history of this space, we have determined that since the closure of Wood Fashion Cleaners, we've had Best Dinners, which was a food catering business, was in there. And then, there was Sweet On You, a chocolate shop. And then, that was followed by the Do or Die Hair Salon. It's now relocated to a different location. So, the applicant here is The Point, who is a tenant of this space. And they are, they've opened an establishment there. And so, they have proposed to add an outdoor seating area underneath the canopy, which is outside the four walls of the building. That would be considered an outdoor patio. And that requires approval of a conditional use permit to have the outdoor seating. So, the plan that we reviewed that was submitted by the architect shows six four-person tables with a total seating capacity of 24. The applicant is proposing to use metal posts and wire chain to provide a border or barrier around the outdoor serving area. The business hours proposed are 3:00 PM to 1:30 AM. It's not clear whether they plan to continue the outdoor service until 1:00 AM. That's something that could be clarified. One thing we wanted to point out is in the sidewalk dining areas for Martinelli's or Blue Sky or those locations, they are required to close down at 12:00 AM under the terms of the sidewalk dining ordinance. So, as we noted, the primary reasons that you review outdoor patios is so that neighboring property owners can be notified as a patio can sometimes add to the occupant load of the establishment and also tends to project more noise onto neighboring properties than indoor establishments. And so, this conditional use process is designed to have those spillover effects addressed. So, if you look at page five of your report, the ordinance says that food and beverage service on an outdoor patio is allowed, which is accessory to a restaurant or bar, provided that the patio space may not exceed the size or occupant load of the indoor serving space. So, in our background report, we highlighted the locations that the Planning Commission has previously reviewed and approved. And there is an outdoor seating area at the rear of the Paramount Bar on North Santa Fe. There's an outdoor seating area that is adjacent to the Vu, formerly the Rendezvous Bar on North Santa Fe. There's an outdoor seating area at the Alley Entertainment Center on Ash. And there is an outdoor seating area on the back or east side of Ya Ya's. All of those were reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. And each of those cases, part of the review was to confirm that the patio area is not larger than the indoor service area. And so, we just wanted to point out that by area, the area under the canopy is actually larger than the indoor seating area if you subtract out kitchen, bathroom, serving area. But the seating capacity is 32 indoors and 24 outdoors. And so, this particular space has all the attributes you'd expect in the C4 zoning district. All four walls go to the property line. There's an alley on the west side. But this building, including the canopy, covers 100% of the lot. So, if we look at the welfare and convenience of the public, the applicant states that the outdoor food and beverage service area will enhance the services and amenities of other downtown businesses and advance the goals of the Downtown Business Improvement District. Wanted to point out, and we would seek to clarify, that the proposed hours of business are 3:00 PM to 1:30 AM. And it appears that a drinking establishment with very limited food service could provide a positive contribution to the downtown business mix. It would provide a place for pre-show and post-show gathering space for people attending events downtown. It would strengthen the image of the downtown as an entertainment destination. One of the drawbacks of having outdoor drinking areas is just increased difficulty of managing who enters and exits the patio area. It does allow, in some cases, for customers to pass alcohol outside or for patrons to leave the area while still possessing alcohol if it's not properly controlled. And then, another public concern, safety concern that staff has is the fact that this property is unique and that the outdoor serving area has driveway curb cuts. And so, there's no other place downtown where you could actually drive a car into the outdoor serving area. So, I think you could highlight those, Dustin. As you can see from this photograph, it's quite accessible to vehicles and to parking. And so, from staff's perspective, without adequate signage and barriers and some advanced notice, that there's a very real concern that a driver, especially an eastbound driver on Ash coming from the west, could inadvertently drive into that area because they're used to it or they believe it to be a parking area. So, that is a public safety concern that staff has. As far as the impact on surrounding property, the applicant states that the service area will attract customers to surrounding business, which will increase the value of the neighborhood. They indicate that the beverage service area will include a barrier defining its size and location. It will occupy private property and not interfere with streets or sidewalks. So, this proposed serving area will offer limited food and beverage service. It will not be an outdoor entertainment venue with a large stage for live bands or other amplified music. However, if you've noticed, the new stage at the corner of Ash and Santa Fe has taken on the characteristics of an entertainment venue. So, when that is in use, that will reduce the noticeably of this property in terms of its activity and use. So, we've got streets and sidewalks on two sides. The mortgage company is directly to the south. The city county building is across the street to the north. There is a city county building parking lot and Eagles Club that's on the east side of 7th Street. If we're looking at the concentration of drinking establishments, the closest other establishments are the Paramount, Big Nose Kates, and the Scheme. The closest youth activity center, where we have youth congregating, is the City, and that's 250 feet to the south. And then, the closest church to this point is the First Methodist Church on 8th Street, which is about 450 feet away. So, our measurements were that the square footage of the outdoor area under this canopy is slightly larger than the indoor area. But the roped-off area on the architect's plan, which is on the screen, is slightly smaller in size and seating capacity than the indoor area. So, based on that and the activities at the stage, we don't know that this will have a noticeable impact on surrounding properties. We would ask the applicants to clarify whether they have any plans to rent this facility or space out for private events, and if so, how those might be managed. We don't see this, it will increase parking need slightly, but we don't see this as impacting public facilities or services or trash pickup or any of those things. The primary impact will just be use of a space that was primarily either open space or parking and converting that to a seating area. So, except for the covered parking under the canopy that Mr. Hirsch has shown, there's no private parking on this property. Parking is available on adjacent streets and nearby parking lots. Technically, the parking lot across the street on the east side of 7th is a building authority parking lot. It's not a public parking lot. It's intended for employees, but it does get used for public parking. One of the findings that the commission needs to make and the one that staff is focused on is that the commission must find that adequate drives will be provided and designed so as to prevent traffic hazards. And our primary concern is to prevent a traffic hazard. And the concern is that we have open curb cuts here and we have an area that has continued to be used for off-street parking. And so, if this is only used intermittently and not permanently for outdoor seating, that makes the outdoor dining use unpredictable for drivers because they don't know on a given day or given time whether it's a parking area or it's a outdoor seating area. And then, our other concern is the proposed use of the portable stanchions and chain to border the dining area. Those won't provide any protection to, for a vehicle that's pulling in. And so, we have had this discussion with previous tenants there and had shared with them the same thing. So, since that's what we've been telling people for 10 or 15 years, we're going to continue to say the same thing. And the only way to stop a vehicle from pulling into a curb cut is to have a solid barrier there, such as a concrete block or barrier. And so, in our staff report, we cited the example of the Planning Commission's review of the Stutzman's Greenhouse at 9th and Cloud. And that used to be a service station. And it had multiple curb cuts on 9th Street and multiple curb cuts on Cloud, which they were not using as part of their setup. So, the Planning Commission required Stutzman's to place concrete barriers across the driveway entrances on 9th Street to prevent vehicles from driving into the plant display area. In that case, the property was owned by Kansas Wesleyan University. Neither Stutzman's or Kansas Wesleyan wanted to go to the expense of removing the driveways and putting in solid curbs. So, they left the driveways in, but barriers were put in to keep cars from being able to inadvertently drive into the display area. So, you do have the authority through the conditional use permit ordinance to impose appropriate conditions and safeguards, which are outlined on page nine of your report. We believe that gives you the discretion and authority to require something more substantial than the chain connected to stanchions, but that is, that's a judgment call for the Planning Commission. So, as far as The Point indoors, they have approximately 800 square feet of indoor area and a posted occupant load of 49, but they have 32 chairs. They have a limited kitchen and menu. The rolled ice cream they serve is their featured item. They don't have space for a dance floor. They do have an amplified sound system inside the indoor area. On the outdoor area, it's about, if you just look at the chained-in area, it's about 600 square feet with six tables and seating for 24. As we understand it, the outdoor area would be open from 3:00 PM to 1:30 AM. The nearest residential development is some second-floor lofts on North Santa Fe to the east. And we have put the distances to the Paramount, Big Nose Kates, and the Scheme, which are the closest other drinking establishment. So, on page 10, we have provided items that we felt needed clarification at today's public hearing. We have reviewed the application and the case file, and we had to do independent research to determine who the property owner was. The applicant lists themselves as the property owner. They are not the property owner, they are the tenant. And the application is only signed by the applicant. The email that you have from Mr. Charles Alt-Dool does indicate that they are doing this with his approval and consent. So, that should address that item. The previous property owners have asserted ownership and control over this area and asserted that it was common area and that it didn't belong to this tenant space. The app, the owner seems to indicate that that's not the case. Staff will just agree to disagree on whether the building owner parks his vehicle under the canopy. I can tell you that the planning staff parks in the parking lot across the street. And we walk in every day and we see who's parked there. So, it's kind of hard to hide it from us when there's vehicles parked under there. So, the part that's unclear to us is whether this plan for The Point would be, is it going to be occasional, such as weather permitting or when there are special events downtown? Is it going to be just in the summertime? Is it going to be there on a year-round basis? If we're pulling the chains and the stanchions out on an intermittent basis, to us, that increases the likelihood that drivers would think this is still a drop-off or parking area. So, it's not clear to us whether this is continuing to be used as covered parking for other tenants or for customers of The Point. The applicant needs to clarify, have they considered other means or methods for blocking off the driveways while the outdoor seating is in place? And then, the other concern is if you think about the Vu, if you think about the Paramount, the Alley, or Ya Ya's, they have permanent fixed fencing for their outdoor area. With the use of a chain and stanchions, that means that we have to monitor this to make sure that the outdoor area doesn't grow and become larger than the indoor area. So, those are all points that we think need to be clarified at today's hearing. We do think that this drinking establishment is adequately separated from other downtown drinking establishments. It's not going to result in an over-concentration as proposed on the site plan by the applicant's architect. The dining area is accessory to and smaller in size than the indoor area. So, it meets that qualification. We do think this will increase street-level activity downtown. They're not proposing outdoor concerts or musical events. We think that anything that happens at the relocated Campbell Plaza stage is going to overshadow anything that happens in this patio. There's no off-street parking required to add a separate patio area. We don't think there's a traffic hazard if suitable barriers are installed to prevent vehicles from inadvertently driving into the outdoor seating area. And that is going to be a judgment call for the commission. And then, this is a concept that is encouraged in our comprehensive plan to have outdoor dining. So, just a couple of points, and not to make this complicated, but the original plan or goal of the zoning administrator, who is myself, was to have The Point come in and apply for a drinking establishment license through a conditional use permit, like we just did for the garage and for the wine bar. They declined to do that and insisted that they were a restaurant. As zoning administrator, I don't agree that they're a restaurant. And most restaurants don't have the hours of 3:00 PM to 1:30 AM because you'd miss the lunch crowd. So, as a compromise, I signed a drinking establishment license for The Point on the condition that they submit to me monthly receipts confirming that at least 30% of their monthly sales is food sales. And so, if they do not, it turns out they don't have 30% food sales, then they'll have to come back and apply to you for a conditional use permit to be there. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me, nor do I particularly want to solicit on a monthly basis their monthly receipts. So, one option you have today is to approve a conditional use permit for a drinking establishment in this location and make that a drinking establishment with an outdoor service area. If you took that approach, then this would allow them to not have to submit monthly reports. You would just be saying that you understand that they're a drinking establishment, that that's a suitable location. And if they have a conditional use permit for that use with an outdoor patio, they're, they don't have to be submitting- they don't have to be submitting their sales receipts. So your first option would be to approve a conditional use permit for the point as a drinking establishment with outdoor patio with the requirement that a suitable barrier be installed to prevent vehicles from driving into the outdoor serving area. That is up for discussion, and it's a judgment call as to what constitutes a suitable barrier. You could approve a conditional use permit for the drinking establishment with an outdoor patio based on the barrier proposed by the applicant, which is the stanchions and wire chain. You could approve a conditional use permit for the outdoor patio only, subject to any conditions or revisions to the plan you think are appropriate. If you take option three, then the point would have to submit monthly receipts to me for the next 12 months confirming that 30% of their sales are food sales. If their food sales are below 30%, then they will have to apply for a separate conditional use permit and come back to you. You could postpone consideration of this application to a future meeting date if you feel like additional information is needed. Or you could deny the application if you think that the applicant's plan does not do enough to prevent a potential traffic hazard. So we would request that the applicant clarify whether this is a temporary or intermittent, seasonal or permanent, and whether the outdoor amplified sound would be a regular feature. And then the possible conditions we have are that the development and use of the licensed premises correspond to the approved floor plan and seating plan, that any substantial modifications to that plan or outdoor features would require approval of an amendment by this body, and that the applicant shall install suitable barricades in the driveway entrances on Seventh and Ash to prevent motorists from driving into the outdoor serving area through those openings. So it's, from that standpoint, it's, from staff's perspective, it's just a matter of what the planning commission believes constitutes a suitable barrier. And if the commission believes that the stanchions and wire chains with appropriate signage is sufficient, that is within your purview. I think the main thing that staff doesn't understand is how often the outdoor seating area is going to be in use and whether it's going to continue to be used for covered off-street parking. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have. We do have the representatives of the point here to clarify any of those items.
Questions to staff? Dean, I have one. Dustin, could you go back to the picture where the cars were parked there? So Dean, are you saying that this barricade should be out in the drive area? In other words, like between the sidewalk and the street?
No, it would still be, it would still be behind the sidewalk. But the, in the case of the ones at Stutzman's, they are, they are behind the sidewalk. And so they're, the sidewalk is still open and available, and they've used a combination of things. But in several locations, they bring in large concrete barriers or blocks and drop them down across the opening. And then the plant display is behind that.
What would the city's viewpoint be on, let's just say, for example, some large concrete planters that were both attractive and functional, you know, placed like, we'll say, three or four of them across that area?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there has to be three or four. It's a pretty wide curb cut. But the city of Salina used to have large, as part of the Streetscape project, they used to put large concrete, I call them tank barriers, but they were planters that were concrete, and they put them across the mouth of alleys that were pedestrian-only alleys that they didn't want vehicles driving up and down. They have since removed those and replaced them with bollards. But those planters that were concrete planters with plants in them were designed to tell vehicles that that alley wasn't open to traffic and it was impassable because of those planters. All of those have been removed. But yeah, it doesn't have to be a concrete barrier. It's just really a question of whether the commission believes that signage or other things are sufficient to tell somebody that that is not a parking area, but it is an area for outdoor seating.
For clarification, we do have kind of a video that the applicant has shared with us that shows what they're proposing. So this would be the stanchions with the chains that Mr. Andrew alluded to. And this is, this would be a similar setup to what they're proposing. So they're portable stanchions. Currently, they're able to bring them in and out. They do a good job when you have visibility of defining the area. I think the concern is if you do have a vehicle, they're not going to offer much resistance. And they are black, so they're not super visible at night.
Thank you, Dustin.
Sure.
Would the applicant like to address the commission? Come forward and state your name and address.
Hello.
Name and address, please. Okay, name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Diego Carrizales, the point owner. And I live right now on 709 Banner Circle. And she's Belen. She's here for, she's going to help me to, the language, you know?
Very good.
Good afternoon, everybody.
So one of the things, the concerns that we have is if this is going to be a year-round type seating arrangement, or are you going to take it down?
He is telling me that it would be weather permitted. So if it's snowing or something, he's not planning on having an outdoor seating area. I just wanted to clarify also that he has put signs with the chain barrier that says, "No parking," so if that makes a difference also for...
Would that patio also be used for parking at times when you're not using it?
No, now, even though, he was waiting for the permit to be authorized. Now there's no cars and it is chained and no parking signs are there. So he plans not to have the parking available even though he doesn't have the seats out. So that would be a year-round. He has a picture, I think, Dustin, with the signs, but... So this is how it looks now without the seating area available, but it will be not available for parking, I guess.
Are the hours going to be 3:00 to 1:30 AM?
So during the week, it's 3:00 to 8:00.
We're playing Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Keep open to 12:00, 1:30. But it's not feasible right now because we don't have enough employee for run the bar, you know? So right now, we're just working only 8:00 to 10:00, 2:00, 3:00 to 8:00 PM.
8:00 to 3:00 is more like the ice cream, and there is some drinks, but... He did want to sign, he has the sales of this month. So the ice cream, the rolled ice cream, was a total of 2,445 total ice creams compared to the drinks that were only 23 during the month. And he has the receipts here, so... He does consider it to be a restaurant more than a bar, so... It was a total of 70 shakes. So 2,000 ice cream, 70 shakes, and just 24 drinks. It was just four... Four vodka sodas.
Three Modelo beers.
Three beers. Two Smirnoff. And one mojito.
Dean, have you seen these?
No, he hasn't.
No, I have not.
We have them here available for him.
And those numbers, those numbers were for the month of July, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And how long have you been open? Were you open the whole month of July?
Yes. The 7th, 5th or 7th of July. So his idea is just for you guys to understand that it is a drinking establishment, but it's a lot calmer than a normal bar, I think, you know?
So any plans to offer any other food items?
Yes, there is food items. We have sent the menu on email, but I don't know if it's there. There is, there is items. I think right now, during the summer, it's going to be the ice cream, the most popular item. But there is items that are simple to prepare. I don't think we send it to you, huh? I have it in my email if you want me to send it.
I think we have it. I don't think I have it down here with me, but I have seen their menu. We've inspected their kitchen. They have a food service license so they can serve the ice cream and other food items.
So he just, his only concern with the concrete dividers is that it's, he's renting. So he knows that that would be maybe something permanent that would be maybe an issue for the owner for the future if he doesn't continue there, but...
Well, they can be made movable, that's...
Yeah, I would note, and even staff hadn't, we got this so late before the meeting, we didn't have a chance to read through it. But on page two and three of the written comments we received from the owner, I'll just read those, that the public parking lot in front of Campbell Plaza Stage that the city just completed and started using this path month is still accessible to traffic and used as a parking lot every day, including days when the venue was hosting events. There are no concrete barriers installed in that lot, and it is accessible to the neighboring lot to the west even when the stage venue is in operation. Removable signage and removable barricades are used by the city to control access to Ash and Santa Fe Parking Lot when it's operating as a stage seating area, requiring more from a private property owner than the city is willing to require from itself is unreasonable. So that is, those are fair points. What the city does is they use reflective traffic cones. And what we've tried to emphasize is to, to, when there's actually an event there, that it's, the event users are using the area from the stage all the way to the plaza. And so that access to the parking lot for vehicles is completely cut off for some of the smaller events. People have tried to leave the driveway open and cone off the other areas. I think what the property owner is trying to say is if the city can use reflective cones, why are you trying to require more here? The only point that staff is distinguishing here is that the fact that that is a wide-open area that everyone can see. And when you're approaching this building from Seventh Street or from traveling eastbound on Ash, you can't see the area that is the outdoor seating area. So you're already making your turn by the time you realize that there's a seating area there. So you can see there, that's their attempt by having the no parking and the reflector there to alert those people that that is not to be entered into or used for parking. And as I stated, that was, that is your judgment call to make whether that is a suitable barrier to tell people to stay out and keep their vehicles out. So I wanted to make sure that the comments from the property owner who believes that the concrete barriers are unreasonable when the city doesn't use them themselves, that's a fair statement. Our point was for people who don't know that's there, that the only thing that stops a vehicle is something that's substantial enough to stop a vehicle.
What about if, if, let's say, reflective cones or something, when there was, the outdoor seating was being used, were placed out by the curb cuts instead of...
It would, it would be, it's possible that if we worked with them to have some reflective cones that were put out, I don't know if you want to go, if you put them out beyond the sidewalk into that area, that would certainly alert people sooner than the chain and the barrier there. That's something that we could work with. Because the whole point is to alert drivers before it's too late and they don't realize that they're entering a seating area.
Is that something you guys could be on board with?
Yes. Well, he's just wanting to make emphasis that it is a private area. It's not like, it's not the sidewalk. The only people authorized to park there are the owners or the tenant, I guess, but...
The difference is, I think, that Dean is alluding to is if somebody didn't realize what was going on there, the traffic cones would be to keep an accident from happening.
Yes.
Somebody accidentally driving in.
Yes, I think that would be, that's something easy for us to do.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I had two concerns when I was reading through this packet. And number one was the traffic hazard with those open curb cuts. Unfortunately, in the news over the last several months, we've seen some vehicle versus pedestrian, whatever, like driving the parade routes and different things, whether on purpose or not. And that would, that would be an awful thing to have occur here in Salina. I like the look of the chains and the stanchions, but I think it needs to be a little more stout to keep a vehicle from going in there. All it's going to take is one person, you know, turning too early, thinking they're turning on Seventh, and they turn into this parking lot and they can hit those tables and families, kids, having ice cream or whatever. And that, I mean, that's just my personal opinion. I'm more for safety in this regard than ambiance, I guess, is what I'm looking at. The other concern I had was the vending of alcoholic beverages within 250 feet of a youth center. The city right down the street wants to stop one of those kids, underage minors, from coming down and sharing a drink with a buddy who's sitting out on the patio out there without your knowledge. Some of my concerns, I'd love to see, hear how you would... Again, that ties in with the welfare of the public, I think, if you could address those.
They are requesting IDs, and they are, there is a person outside that is supervising, I guess, that. And there is signage also where it says that, you know, no alcohol beside this point for, to avoid people to leave with alcohol. But they do have somebody supervising and asking for IDs when someone young is.
So, are you saying there's like a checkpoint or something out there close to the perimeter of the outdoor seating?
They haven't had alcohol outside, but that is the plan, yes.
So, you're saying the plan is to have alcohol outdoors?
Yes, that is, that is the plan.
And that was where I was going with my concern. It's not like it's roped off or blocked off or anybody can walk by.
All the, just to clarify, so the Martinelli's is a licensed drinking establishment, they can serve alcohol in their sidewalk dining area, same with Blue Sky Brewery, same with Yaya's. Dagny's Ice Cream does not have a liquor license, so they don't serve alcohol, but all the sidewalk dining areas can serve alcohol in their areas. And then, of course, the Vu Paramount and Yaya's and the Alley, who all have outdoor serving areas, can serve in those areas. We just point out it's the same, whether it's the back area of the Paramount or any other place, it's just, we point out that if there is outdoor service, there just needs to be a good management plan to monitor the area, so.
I'm all for the ice cream. As you can tell, I love ice cream. Rolled ice cream is great. I just, I have concerns with it being that close to the youth center, a center of kids coming to come.
Dean, do we know what the hours of the city are?
We do not. I think it differs on Fridays and Saturdays, but my recollection was that we had, we had some issues with that, with Big Nose Kate's and with what preceded that with the Sixth Street Pub. And my recollection at the time was that the closing time of the city was 10 o'clock PM, and that's usually when the kids were gathering to be picked up by parents. I don't know if it's still the same, before they had middle schoolers on Friday nights and high schoolers on Saturday nights, and so I don't, I'm not fresh on what those details are, but in the past, it's been 10 o'clock was the pickup time.
It says 10:30 on their website.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Will you have any outdoor sound?
No, it's indoor.
Any further questions of the applicant? Any questions of staff?
So, I'll just refer for, I know, did Mr. Hay get a packet when he went by?
I've been following along.
Okay, so, just to clarify, we had the questions about the owner's consent, that's been addressed. The control over the space, it is leased area, and on their drinking establishment license, the state has licensed the outdoor area as a serving area for the service of alcoholic beverages. So, their state license includes serving in the outdoor area. It sounds like this is going to be, not that the chains and stanchions are going to come and go based on weather permitting. And then, the, I think the other means that were discussed about blocking off the driveways while the outdoor seating in place, we talked about perhaps some reflective cones that were placed out closer to the street in the driveway approach. So, we have, we have provided alternatives for you on page 12 of your report, which could be to approve the drinking establishment as a conditional use, the outdoor patio as a conditional use, with a requirement of a suitable barrier to be installed. You could approve it just with the stanchions and wires that are being proposed, so option one might incorporate the use of reflective cones. Under option three, you'd be saying that you are approving the outdoor patio only, and they would consider, continue to submit their monthly receipts till they establish that they're regularly over 30% in food sales. You could postpone consideration, or you could deny the application if you think this is incompatible with the surrounding businesses, or that they have not done enough to prevent any form of traffic hazards. So, I think we have summarized those things, and then we had the three conditions that we recommended on page 12, which were just required that if they made any substantial modifications to the seating area, or changed its characteristics, that that would have to come back. And then, the third condition is to install suitable barricades in the driveway entrances on 7th and Ash, and we've discussed different options for what might constitute a suitable barrier. So, those are the options that you would have. And so, again, any motion that would be made or action taken would need to have three affirmative votes on that motion for that to stand.
We also have an individual from the public who would like to speak on the matter and possibly other people in the room.
Okay, thank you. Anybody first in person that would like to address, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the room that would like to speak on behalf of this application? Okay, anybody online? Dustin?
Folks, would this be the right time for me to speak up?
Yes.
Okay. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. My name is Charles Alt-Dool, I'm the building owner at 157 North 7th. I'm also a resident here, and my address is 53 Wildcat Circle. I wanted to address the commission and let you all know that I do support Diego's conditional use permit. I don't have an opinion necessarily on whether it's a restaurant or a drinking establishment, it doesn't make very much difference to me as the owner. The main issue that I wanted to speak on was the parking barriers and barricades idea. Mr. Andrew has reiterated my thoughts on the matter fairly accurately. I do appreciate that acknowledgement. We have used cones in the past on a sort of one-off type of situation where we needed to mark off spaces. We tried to use cones when Do or Die was using the hair salon, was using that space for covered parking for their, for their customers, sorry. That worked sort of well and sort of didn't. I think Diego's idea for chains and stanchions is a little bit better way to mark off the space. I did provide as an attachment to the email that Mr. Andrew received and that staff received, a copy of what we use as Exhibit A, the physical footprint designation for Diego's, for Mr. Carrick's office, for the owner, or the tenant there, for his designated area of the outdoor covered space. He certainly is welcome to leave up those chains and stanchions as long as he likes, if he wants to leave them there overnight or all day long, it's his space to use. It's also his space to control for parking. I'm not aware of any public parking that occurs on that property. The public doesn't have and hasn't had authority to use that space for public parking because it is private property, and that's been true at least since I've owned buildings, and I bought the building in 2020. So, for the last two, two and a half-ish years, that's been the case. We have controlled access to that space as the owners of the building accordingly. I would also say that I understand and appreciate the commissioner's remarks about not wanting car versus pedestrian accidents. I certainly don't want that as a property owner. I am not aware of any incidents where we've had any kind of high-speed pull-throughs in that area. Frankly, you have to turn too sharp to get in there, into those driveway cuts. So, I don't know that that's, I appreciate the mentality, I just don't know that that's a risk that's very likely to occur. And I do appreciate the idea that cones, reflective cones or other removable objects or barriers would be, would be acceptable to address that issue. I'd rather not have concrete blocks or planters sitting on the concrete pad that's out there. It's not a, it's not a continuous pore of concrete, it's frankly, it's older than I'm really familiar with, so I'd rather not have heavy objects sitting there cracking the concrete if we could avoid that. And so, my preference would be that the commission approve, I think it's recommendation number two on page 12, the staff report, conditional use permits with the stanchions and wire chains is the approved traffic control device. As far as the issue of underage access to alcohol service on the patio, I think this point's been covered a couple times already, I just want to reiterate that Yaya's, Blue Sky, Old Chicago, Martinelli's, and I'm probably forgetting one or two others, they do engage in the same kind of outdoor service of food and beverage, including alcohol. And I don't know if the city has had problems with other, with any of those establishments, with minors accessing alcohol sales, but I don't see why this one would be any different. I think the Big Nose Kate's is probably actually a little bit closer to the city than the, than this proposed service area would be. And it used to, at least it used to be true that you could obtain food and alcohol service in the lower level of that outdoor patio on the first floor underneath Big Nose Kate's from the Sixth Street Pub and the other subsequent businesses that were in there. So, all that being said, I do, I do support the tenant's application here, and if the commission has any questions for me as the property owner, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions of the property owner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to comment on this application? Discussion?
I'm still stuck on the something more substantial than stanchions and chains. I think it works well for the business, but if we're looking at it from a safety aspect, and I do appreciate what Mr. Dool said, it hasn't happened here in Salina, but I was looking more nationally at the news, and some of these things have been detrimental, and I would hate for anything like that to happen here in Salina.
I'm somewhat in agreement with that. I think some form, and I would like to maybe see staff work with the applicant on something that was not entirely like an orange cone, something a little more appealing than that.
You know, Mr. Andrew mentioned bollards, and perhaps that's an idea, you know, that would be decorative as well as, but I don't know if those are removable either.
But I personally think that they need to be out by that curb cut out there as a primary type of defense. I know that those could be cut into the existing concrete there and some kind of a removable thing like they use in the, for access to the levees and that type of thing could be used there.
Well, the, in the downtown alleys, what they have done is they have, I would describe them as droppable bollards. So, what they have is they have the bollards that are erect and have little reflectors on them, and then in the wintertime, when they're plowing the alleys, they can drop the bollard. It folds down so that they can, they can plow the surface, and then the bollard goes back up. But I would think that a, the city uses not orange, but reflective yellow, yellow-green cones for the parking lot at Santa Fe and Ash, so certainly placing something like that out in the driveway approach would put people on notice that that is not an open driveway, and that, that's, the main concern is that and the, you know, the need that have an absolute, something that would stop a vehicle is going beyond that, but the, having the cones out or something out in the driveway approach that provides a more early warning would be helpful, and it's, it would probably eliminate the need for something that would be stout enough to stop a vehicle. So, you can, you could either direct what you think that should be, or direct staff to work with them to come up with something for the driveway approaches, but.
Personally, I don't have a problem with the drinking if there's going to be a maitre d or a receptionist there to control the, you know, traffic in and out. I think it's, would be a nice addition to downtown. Kind of reminds me with the lights and stuff of some Miami Beach looking stuff, so. Anyway, I think it would enhance that entertainment district downtown, personally. Any further discussion? Are you ready to make a motion?
I guess if I was going to make a motion, I'd lean toward option three there. Even the applicant himself is saying that the alcoholic sales are far below the 30%, so if we're going to go with a conditional use, we can continue with the outdoor patio instead of jumping all the way to drinking establishment that was listed up in one and two.
And then, also would that include the staff working?
Right, with the direction of staff working with the applicant for some type of safety barrier for those curb cuts that are in place there. Now, you put that in the form of a motion now.
We have a motion, is there a second? I'll second it. Been moved and seconded to approve application CU 22-6, option number three on page 12 with the direction of staff to work with the applicant on some suitable traffic control at the edge of the road there.
That would be in the driveway approach.
In the driveway approach, yes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, as well.
So, do we have three affirmative votes? Could we have a raise of hands? All those in favor of approving option three, could you raise your hands?
Oh, no, I was, I was opposed as well, so.
We need a clarification on that, then. So, the motion that's on the floor, and I, did you get the second on that, Dustin or Margie?
James Jones.
So, the motion was to approve a conditional use permit for the outdoor patio only, subject to the three conditions, and the condition that the applicant work with staff to provide suitable barriers in the driveway approach areas to provide warning to drivers. And so, that was a motion by Commissioner Farber, seconded by Commissioner Jones, and so what we'd be looking for is a show of hands to who's in favor of approving. this conditional use permit application with those conditions. So those in favor, could you raise your right hand? Okay, so that's three votes in favor, those opposed, same sign. Okay, so that is a vote of three in favor, two against. And three votes is sufficient to be binding action on behalf of the commission. So the application is approved by a three to two vote.
Very good. Thank you. And now I'll turn the meeting over to Commissioner Hay.
Okay, we'll drop down to application number 3.2.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The application 3.2 is also a conditional use permit application that's filed by Sean and Jessica Kindlesberger, and they're requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow multifamily dwellings and townhomes to be constructed in a planned neighborhood shopping district. And the location of the property is on Brock Road, which is a road that comes up south Ohio, north of Wendy's Restaurant. And so they're looking to develop the undeveloped area around the cul-de-sac for residential housing instead of neighborhood commercial uses. I will let Mr. Hirs inform you about this application.
Thank you, Dean and Commission. So the applicant, who is Sean and Jessica Kindlesberger, are looking to acquire the vacant ground at the end of Brock Road. Brock Road was originally developed in the late 90s, early 2000s with New Horizons Dental, as well as what was Kansas Quick Lube and now is Pioneer Quick Lube there today. The property is zoned Plan C2 District, which does not allow residential uses as a permitted use, but rather allows them as a potential conditional use. And what that means is that this body through a public hearing process has to review a proposed plan and the proposed conditional use on a case-by-case basis to decide if it is conducive to the area and if it is suitable, a suitable development for the neighborhood. And so when staff received the application, it had a site plan in it that we were looking at and during our review, we had a number of questions that occurred. Typically, when we have a conditional use permit, we'll have a site plan that shows the layout of the proposed development. We'll also have a landscape plan showing what's being proposed in terms of landscaping. And then also building elevation showing the color, materials, the height of the building, what, what the building is going to look like so that you can determine the impact that that proposed development will have on the neighborhood. And so as we're going through our review, we noticed that we didn't have a landscape plan. We didn't have building elevations. And when we talked to the applicant, he also indicated that they were looking to potentially change their site plan. And so I bring that up so that we don't, I'm not going to go through the whole report. I'm going to go through some of the conversations that we've had with the applicant, where we are with the application, and talk about some of the questions that we have. And so in the PC2 District, all of the buildings are required to have a 25-foot rear setback. And some of them appear to possibly not meet that. There's one area in the southeast corner that appears to be 23 feet. So that's something that we need to be addressed. Again, we also need building elevation drawings with the color and materials. If you want to go directly to page 11, it's kind of where our concerns are or questions that are outstanding. So that's something we want to work with the applicant on is the elevation drawings. And then another item that is of concern particularly to staff and one of the adjacent property owners is stormwater runoff. Anytime you have new development, that always is a question that comes up. We're taking permeable surfaces that are currently turf grass and we're putting concrete or asphalt potentially, parking lots and driveways. We're also putting in roof structures and buildings, all of which are, are surfaces that don't allow water to penetrate into the ground and shed water off. And so where's that water going to go and how's it going to get there? This particular area is designed so that water should get to Brock Road. And then it, it gravity flows to Ohio Street. And then in Ohio Street, both at the Shipple intersection and the Albert intersection are curb inlets with an underground pipe that's pretty significant underneath Ohio Street. So there's inlets that pipe water underground into the public system. And so to get it there, the water has to get, get to Brock Road. And one of the concerns with that is the land does tend to slope to the south a little bit. And so how is the applicant going to address that water runoff? The property owner to the south, when that property was developed, actually had a collection system and pipe that he installed for the development of his property. And so he is concerned that, that while he's currently able to take care of his water, that if additional water comes to him or flows through him from the result of the proposed development, he may have water issues that don't exist today. Another item to address is off-street parking for the residents. This particular residence is going to, or this complex is going to require two parking stalls for every dwelling unit. There are 18 total dwelling units. Each of the dwelling units does have a proposed attached garage. In addition to that, they would be required to have an additional off-street parking space. So one would be garaged in the attached garage for the unit. The other would be somewhere in a driveway that doesn't interfere with any of the access aisles. And those access aisles would have to be properly designed to meet the dimensional requirements, which is if it's 90 degrees, it's going to be 24 feet in width. And so depending on how the parking lot is designed, there may be some additional changes that, that need to be made to accommodate the required off-street parking. And the last concern that staff has is the landscaping. Anytime you do multifamily residential development in Salina, you are required to have front yard landscaping similar as you would with a commercial project. So a single-family or duplex, two-family townhomes, that style of residential development does not have any landscape requirement. It's voluntary. But when you get into the multifamily residential classification of development, it does require landscaping. And so in this case, what that would mean is landscaping along the front yard setback area around the cul-de-sac of Brock Road. And it would also require a landscaping buffer of at least 15 feet between the proposed residential properties and the single-family residential to, to the west. So all of the single-family residents that face Lewis Street, those are all single-family and would require a landscape buffering between the proposed complex and, and those units there. And so I bring all that up because we are working with the applicant on some of the revisions that they have in mind. And that means they're not ready for action. But I do want you to know that the applicant and staff have had some conversations and will continue to have conversations to that effect. And so as far as our recommendation, we would recommend that you would postpone consideration to a specific date in the future.
What kind of date might that be Dustin?
Yeah, so the next, the next planning commission date is the 16th. We'll talk to the applicant on if they feel they can get all of the things taken care of that need to get taken care of by then. I, I know that they're, they're, they feel close on their, their new plans because they, they were thinking they might have had them to us yesterday morning. And they may even have them this afternoon. I don't know. I haven't got that far in my email inbox yet. But I think they're close on some of the redesigns now. I say that, but staff hasn't reviewed those. We don't know that, that means they're ready to go. There may be additional questions that come out of that. I don't want to put the applicant in a position where they come to this board and they get postponed again. But I also don't want to delay their project. So I think we'd like to hear from them on, on their comfort level with the, the questions and concerns that we've outlined on their comfort level and getting those, those items addressed. And then we can go from there. The 16th is the next available planning commission. And the one following, I'll have Margie kindly look for me. Or Kai, maybe Kai can help. Yeah, it'll be the first Tuesday, the fifth? Six? 6th of September is the following one. So I think August 16th or September 6th would be the, the next two available that would, could be considered.
And that needs to be part of the motion.
It needs to be part of the motion because it's a public hearing process. That way, anyone who's following on, following along with the process knows when that, that hearing will take place. And with that, we'll take any questions and we do want to make sure we hear from the public because it is a public hearing.
I just got a couple of questions Dustin. Okay. Is the 16th, number one, is the 16th too soon? I mean, you know, we're looking a couple of weeks down the line. Maybe the 6th of September would be more in line for?
Yeah, possibly. I will say that I will not be here until the 15th. So, or 16th, yes. So I will get back. I'm leaving and I'll be back, but I won't have time to do a new staff report between now and then, which means Mr. Andrew would have to do it if, if they did do the 16th as the, the new date.
Okay. Then the other, I took a drive over that, is it Brock Road? Is that being only one way in, can we get a fire apparatus in there and get turned around in that?
That's, that's a good question. The fire department, I'll pull up the aerial photo again. They do have, and I'll pull up the utilities. There is a fire hydrant on the west end of the development that the fire department believes they can get to. And the existing site plan, they felt they could reach all points of the structures in order to fight a fire if they needed to. Any new revised plans will also have the fire department look to make sure that that's still the case. So they keep, they feel like they can get in there and they can fight a fire. And anytime you have a short run like this, it's, you don't have a second way in per se. But it's a, it's not a large subdivision. It's, it's, it's a small subdivision that has direct access to an arterial. So we're not far from.
But in terms of the cul-de-sac radius, that's a public street and that's designed to meet city street standards, which is designed to allow a fire truck or trash truck to turn around and go back out. So that, that has a, that has a 90-foot diameter, which is what is required by our subdivision regulations. And that, that's what's needed to turn a fire truck or a trash truck around. And that, that is the purpose of the cul-de-sac so that the fire apparatus can hook up to the hydrant, fight a fire and turn around and get back out. I think it's more, it's not a matter of who's, who will do a staff report or prepare it for you. I think it's more a function for the applicant in terms of what they, where they think they're at and their designer and to, to see if those items that were set out by Mr. Hirs, how readily or quickly those could be addressed.
So is the applicant here?
Yes.
Is there any more questions for staff on this before we? Okay, if the applicant would like to come forward?
Hello, Sean Kindlesberger and my wife Jessica. Did you get the email from yesterday? Because yesterday evening I sent you an email that should have updated plans, elevations.
I, I haven't got caught up with my emails yet.
Unfortunately, in our defense, that request was not made until Monday. And we were to have that Monday at what noon? I think we did get it till yesterday evening.
Can you swing that microphone back around to you guys?
Until late last week, we weren't sure. So we've been scrambling trying to get things done, but.
There is a revised email. There's a revised site plan along with elevations, floor plans, exterior finish. It was all sent. Unfortunately, they didn't have time to review, but it has been sent over.
That and the drainage plans, does that?
It does not have a drainage plan at this time.
Enough time to get that?
We're basically under contract to buy that contingent, the permit being issued. So.
Contingent of the reason.
When we get, when we deal with the, or get a final set of plans, that'll all be taken care of as far as drainage.
So I guess the question is though, is the 16th too soon? Would you rather see the 6th of September to give you time to get whatever recommendations or whatever stuff?
I, I think we'd be fine with that.
Yeah, it isn't feasible to move forward and have extensive planning, you know, done
Exactly.
without knowing if we can rezone this.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Absolutely. No, I think it's a needed thing and if we can help you by going 16th as opposed to 6th, I'm all for it.
Fantastic. And we feel like we're taking a piece of property that's been for sale for 20 years. Obviously, it's not going to work for what it was intended for and bring some
We looking at the 16th?
Housing units online real fast.
I'm thinking if, if they're okay with the 16th, I say we, we try to accommodate the applicant as much as possible.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any in the public like to address this? We have anybody online?
Is there anyone online who would like to speak on this matter? Does not appear so.
Dustin, could you scroll the aerial photo up to show Mr. Newell's parking lot and just, just show what we're? So the, Mr. Newell's not present, but he owns this building. Her? No, he is present.
Okay.
Okay, he is present. So we would want to hear from Mr. Newell about his drainage concerns, so.
Okay. Can you state your name for us please?
My name's Tim Newell. I'm the owner of this property 1003 through 1013. My insurance agency is on the east side of the building. Where kind of the trash dumpster is to the right of that. And yeah, that's where my office is. But when we, when I purchased this property and I probably purchased it with some statements made to me that probably weren't too correct. But when we did our civil engineering, it came back that water flowed across the Brock Edition or Brock Street, I guess, cul-de-sac south to Albert Avenue. And I was responsible for all of that watershed. So I had to install a pipe right where that cursor is right there. There's an inlet right there. And I had to go all the way back out to Albert with, I think, an 18 to 24-inch concrete pipe. That was of considerable expense when I hadn't expected any. So there is a significant drop in elevation from Brock to, or from Brock Avenue to the back of my property and, and I would have severe concerns about water drains. That, that would be my issue. So it's possible. I don't know. I think when they, when I talked to Dustin and we were trying to get those prints from the civil engineering when it was, when my property was done in 2004. That's quite a while ago, but I'm not sure exactly how it was designed. Don Mars took care of that. And I don't know if CAU did that, but anyway, they, I'm not sure exactly what that diameter of pipe was engineered for. I would assume it was for, it kind of flowed south and towards Wendy's. So kind of to that back corner, that's kind of why there's probably about a, a four-foot drop from the back of that white truck or where that cursor is. There's about a five-foot drop to that, that culvert that takes in that inlet. Yeah. Yeah. And as far as having the water get out to Brock, I just don't know how it's, I mean, again, I'm not here to make decisions, but it's, it is a significant elevation, not so much for the back two lots, but the lots that, that are adjacent to my property are. So, but I do have that culvert there and it is possible. You know, I, I guess I would be amenable to possible tapping into that inlet if it's possible. If it's been engineered properly to accept it, so. properly to accept it, so that, I guess that's my biggest concern. So, any questions? Okay.
It's a valid concern.
All right, thank you.
So our, our observation out there is that, as Mr. Newell observed, that from about this point over to here, the natural ground elevation is higher than the cul-de-sac, so getting it to naturally drain here and having it go out to Ohio, it's just a little different right here where this is actually lower than the cul-de-sac, so there's going to have to be some grading or shaping or something done with what's put here to get it to positively drain out there, and then, you know, we are always going to have rear drainage off of the building, but the, the primary concern is that this is kind of a low corner right here, and we're going to try to work to get this parking and drainage to get out to Brock Road, and that may take some grading or reshaping here to get that, to turn that way and, and not, so it, it drains back as it currently does, some of that corner drains back into the corner of Mr. Newell's parking lot and into his pipeline.
Just glad to be part of that drainage study will come up and...
Well, just be part of having some, some sort of lot grading plan or some, some plan for the unit that's, that's put over here just to demonstrate to the commission and to be able to demonstrate to neighbors that this can positively drain back to the cul-de-sac and not, not have roof drains or, or concrete paving areas draining back to the southeast. And so that, we'd hope to be able to address that for you on the 16th.
Okay. Any more questions for staff? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action on the postponement to the 16th.
Mr. Chair, I move we postpone consideration of application CU 22-9 to the next Planning Commission meeting, which is scheduled for August 16.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0. Okay.
The third public hearing item that we have is a public hearing on plans for developing Phase Two of the River Run addition, and that involves both a zoning request to change the zoning district classification from its current agricultural designation to a planned development district with R Single Family as the underlying zoning, and then that also involves approval of an amended preliminary development plan, and the proposal is to develop an 11-lot residential subdivision on that property, and then there's a companion application, which is a preliminary subdivision plat for the same acreage, showing how the 11 lots would be laid out. You're probably going to hear me say the same thing over and over again, just to remind you, but there's, in addition to being a very large and complex subdivision, not large in terms of total number of lots or density, but what is notable about River Run is the, the dramatic changes in elevation and terrain that are on the property, and the property was master planned, there was a land planner from HNTB who also did the land planning for the Colbert Hills development in Manhattan, and they were brought over here, and the first thing that they did was look at the, the lay of the land, the elevation changes, and you can see the closer together contour lines are, the steeper the elevation is, and so this, this was, it was done in two phases because of the, part of it was the way it was special assessed and financed, that it was advantageous to put off the plating and zoning of Phase Two to allow some of the special assessments to be deferred, and so we have, we have outlined in a good part of our report that we, we started out with a 94-acre tract, and the north 41.43 acres was final platted, and the master plan had what was referred to as estate slots, manor lots, and villa lots, and then a townhome area that was set aside next to the, what was in the Elks Club, now Great Life Golf and Fitness, and so there were, as you can see from the, the Planned Development District staff report, there were a number of conditions that were imposed on this, and some of them involved consenting to future special assessments, some of them had to do with having adequate water supply for fire protection, and so the, only the north 41.43 acres, which has 47 building lots plus a townhome area, was platted, final platted and final zoned, and the, the, the south portion, the remaining portion was left in its agricultural zoning, but not platted, it was all annexed into the city. Then in 2010, the developer, Mr. Veneer, came in and amended the final development plan for the townhome area, and that was redone to create a number of, of single-family lots, and a private street called Longfield Drive was created, and so that was approved by the Planning Commission in, in 2011, and the result was, we, there is one cluster of townhomes under the original plan that was in place, and then that area was modified to create a private street and lots for individual home sites, and, and that was done in 2011. So River Run Estates LLC has been formed, and they have purchased the remaining unplatted portion of River Run, which is 23.74 acres, plus they have purchased three platted lots that are in the original subdivision, and so they filed this request for the rezoning of Phase Two to a planned development district with R as the underlying zoning district for the purpose of developing a large lot residential subdivision in a configuration that differs substantially from the master plan that was approved in 2003. And an amended preliminary plat has also been submitted that proposes a, a realignment and an extension of Overlook Drive to serve 11 lots for new family, single-family home So if this rezoning request is approved, development of this estate's area would be subject to the standards that we outlined on page seven of your report, which has got a 30-foot front yard setback, seven and a half foot side yards, rear yards of 25 feet, minimum lot size of 8,500 square feet, maximum lot coverage of 30 feet, and a maximum height of 35 feet, the maximum size of garage that could be built is 24-foot by 32-foot. As we looked at this and we compared it to Highland Meadows Hamlet, which had, just for your benefit, the, the fire code has some higher separation standards and fire flow standards for homes that exceed 3,600 square feet in size, and we anticipate that that could be the case here. So one of the things we look at is the suitability of the site for development, and Mr. Veneer believed that this property was uniquely suited for residential development, that a planned community will offer lifestyle and economic attributes and housing styles that are not available elsewhere in Salina, and that agricultural zoning serves to inhibit development of the site. Those are still the case with Phase Two. The, if we look at how this works, we have an elevation of about 1250 at the intersection of River Run and Merrymount, then the property rises to, to 1310 along Overlook Drive, and then drops down to 1240 and all the way down to 1230 along the river, so that's, that's a total drop of 80 feet in elevation in a fairly short stretch, and that type of topography and terrain is very unique in the, in the city of Salina. And so one of the things that we've observed about the original plan, and I think you can tell that by looking at the contours of the master plan, is the, the original land planner had a street system and lot layout that conformed with and utilized the existing topography, meaning that there wasn't going to be massive grading or regate, grading or removal of trees, and so the focus was on taking the areas that were relatively flat and making those building lots, and taking the areas that were sloped and wooded and making those common area. And so that is, that is not the case with this new layout, the new layout doesn't really take into account or conform with the existing topography, and we'll try to show how that works, but the other limiting factor on this property is that there's 94 acres, only 64 of the 94 acres are above the 100-year floodplain elevation and developable, the area that's, that's down here, that's sometimes referred to as the Meadows area, most of that is in the 100-year floodplain for the Smoky Hill River, so that's not really developable, and the plan was to leave that as common open space and recreation area for subdivision residents. And so due to the sloping terrain and the view of the valley to the west, the proximity to an improved collector's street, which is Merrymount Road, and proximity to the city's infrastructure improvements, which include a pump station at the corner of Merrymount and Cedar Ridge Drive, and the construction of the Markley Road Water Tower, which provided improved water service in this area, those characteristics do make this suitable for some form of residential development. And so it appears that the plan that's being presented here is a logical extension of the zoning and development pattern in Phase One. However, you'll note that our recommendation as to the zoning request would be that this is a public hearing, we should hear input on that, but our recommendation will be to continue that public hearing to either the August 16th or September 6th meeting to allow the rezoning request to be considered in conjunction with the, the development plan or plat, which we feel needs some additional supporting information. So I'm going to go to that and, to that report and try to address some of those things. And so I think we, we've, we've got so many of these different drawings that we've superimposed, but this, this drawing shows that, and I guess maybe Dustin, it would be helpful if you had the one that superimposed the common area. So that, or, or the one that is color-coded. So one of the struggles that we were having in reviewing this layout is that it was so different from what was originally proposed, that we were having a hard time making the two pieces of the puzzle fit together. And this, finally, by superimposing the layout on the original layout, you can see that this over here is the alignment of the original road, and so what, what the purpose of that was, is that it had common area over here, and it had the road pushed over here because that maximized the amount of flat area here that was available for building and building lots, and so by moving this over here, you create potentially some building area over here, but you, you pinch down the, the flat area that's available here. So this, this right here is a ravine and a virtual cliff that is, was originally designated as common area, is still common area, it was purchased by River Run Estates LLC, and they have incorporated it into their building lots, but we think that incorporating those into building lots violates the original intent of having this as common area, left as undisturbed open space for the benefits of, of the lot owners. So there is a provision in, in the covenants for River Run that states that the ownership or differing uses of the common area can only be achieved by affirmative vote of 67% of the lot owners, to change that from common area to a, a different use, which would be a private lot. There's also a provision in the covenants that prevents the partitioning of the common area. So what we see is that this is proposed Lot One on their, their replat, this is proposed Lot Two on the replat, those could conceivably be building lots with this common area in This, we identified as, as an issue just because in reviewing that lot, we couldn't see an area that was suitably flat enough to place a house on without substantially regrading or removal of trees or something fairly dramatic based on the, the topography that's there. And then we have the, the issue of this other common area here, and I, I think what is, what is a challenge here is that the, the, included in the 23.74 acres that River Run Estates purchased from Mr. Veneer is these areas that were designated in the master plan and in the covenants as common area, and they have been incorporated or treated as if they're the same as, as these private lot areas. So on, in our plat report, we have tried, we've, we've titled it as our Corrections Punch List, and so we're, we're going to go through those, and you, you have to look at it really carefully on an aerial photo, and I have been out there, and it's a carryover from 2003 that was never resolved and didn't need to be resolved because it's part of the Phase Two area, but there's an overhead Evergy Power line, it runs across this property, it provides power to some well pumps that are used by Great Life Golf and Fitness on city-owned property that's to the south across an abandoned river channel. There's no easement shown existing or proposed for this overhead line, and you really can't develop the south part with relocate, without relocating that line, and so we have not seen any plan for relocating that, providing a, a different easement location for that, or any correspondence from Evergy about how that would be addressed. that would be addressed. The second item is that the developers are proposing to relocate the existing emergency access easement, access road and gate. So Dustin, where he has his cursor, is at the, the south end of the right-of-way for Overlook Drive. That's not improved. This is just a gravel area here, but there's a fire access road that connects over to the parking lot for Great Life Golf and Fitness. There's an easement for that. That is being proposed to be relocated. The relocated easement puts the connection in south of the parking lot for Great Life Golf and Fitness, and the fire department is not of the belief that there's enough width there to come and, and get back out of there. The idea is for a truck to be able to come in here if the entrance at River Run Parkway is blocked. So that, that connection is, is down in here where there's, there's a roadway here, and the, the, this terrain there is fairly steep, the slope there, and so, the fire marshal thinks that that may be too steep to accommodate a fire truck. And then, the angle of the emergency access road that was shown on the preliminary plat was, was not perpendicular to Overlook Drive. We have not been able to clarify whether the electrical services and the transformers will be located at the front of the lots or in the rear utility easements. We're fairly confident that it's gonna have to be in the front of the lots because of all that terrain and, and drop-off. In the back, it's unlikely that Evergy would use that, but to do that, we would need to have a dedicated easement. And one of the challenges in the first phase was if you have a 50-foot right-of-way and a 29-foot street, and everyone wants to be in front, then you really have to coordinate, you have water, sewer, gas, electric and cable, all trying to utilize the same space to serve those lots with a 50-foot right-of-way. So there really needs to be a, a coordination of those utilities. And in Phase One, we, we basically had a, a cross-section of who, who is gonna be where. And from my experience, the winner of who gets to be closest to the houses is always Evergy. So, they're gonna be the ones that say, wherever you have in the way of easements, we want electric service lines to be closest to the houses from the street. We know that Overlook Drive is a dead-end street. It's the only way in and the only way out, and it exceeds 600 feet, but we've not been able to determine how long this cul-de-sac is compared to the original. So, we will need to clarify that so that you can make an informed decision on granting a variation to the length of a dead-end street. We've not been able to clarify with the applicant's design engineer whether they're proposing to match the cross-section of Overlook Drive in the original part, which had a, a profile of 50 feet of right-of-way, 29 feet of paving width and sidewalks on only one side. If, if there are sidewalks on only one side of the street, that would require a, a conscious variation to be requested and approved by the planning commission. And then, as it relates to the service of the proposed lots, because of the elevation drop-off, the lots at the, towards the end of the Overlook Drive cul-de-sac would have to be served possibly by a sewer force main. The city utilities department, the director of utilities believes that too few lots are served to justify public ownership of the lift station. The developers have asked that the city take ownership and maintenance responsibility for that lift station. The director of utilities believes that there are alternatives to having a lift station, and those could include installation of individual ejector pumps in each of the homes in lieu of having a common lift station. The other thing that we asked about and we're not sure was responded to was that there is a manhole that's close to the townhome area that is 17 feet lower in elevation than the manhole that the design engineer was proposing to tie into. And when you're talking about sewer depth is everything. So where Dustin's pointing, that manhole is at elevation 1275. The elevation up in overlook, the manhole in Overlook Drive is at 1292. And so, you can get, serve more lots and have more gravity flow if you're, you're flowing to a 1275 elevation than a 1292 elevation. And so, we've asked whether that would allow more lots to be served by the gravity system instead of lift stations or ejector pumps. The, we could not identify, although there was a stipulation in the contract about a plan for allowing property owners to access the meadows common area. So, we, we have the, a plat layout, but if you have owners here, there has to be some path by which people here can get down and enjoy that area. And we were not able to, to detect a plan for providing access from Overlook Drive down to that lower common area. And then, I think the, the topography, as we looked at the topography on proposed lots three, four and five, they didn't appear to be buildable. And Lot Three, which is right here, there is virtually no flat spot there. And Dustin, if you could go back to the common area map, and you, you can see from the tree pattern there in the aerial photo, but the reason that the original designer brought this common area here is because of the slopes and wooded area. These were determined to be unbuildable or not desirable for building, so they were left as undisturbed common area. And then, this street was brought here, and this, this would be accessed here. But this blue line represents proposed Lot Three, and that just does not appear to us to be feasible to be a, a buildable lot. And then, these lots here have similar steep terrain and, and drop-offs. And I think the main, the main point to, that's the, been the obstacle for completing Phase Two is that the, the 47 lots in Phase One and the length of that line was all the distance that the director of utilities and the fire chief felt comfortable having a dead-end line with a single source of flow. So there was a provision that no development can occur in Phase Two without a looped water system with two sources of flow. And so, that's most likely gonna be achieved by extending a 12-inch water line from the south end of River Run over to Markley Road, which is a distance of 3,150 feet. And the estimated cost of that would, to go at $100 a foot would be $315,000. There's an annexation agreement in place that requires that the city of Salina do the design for that. And so, if we have homes that are over 3,600 square feet in size, then we're gonna need fire flows of 2,000 gallons a minute. If they are less than that, fire flows of 1,500 gallons a minute would be sufficient, but there's no way to achieve those flows without having a looped connection with the, the second source of flow. And then, we think we've addressed the, the last question, and that had to do with the bylaws and covenants. And whether the, I think what is, was missing is that everything in this subdivision was set up under the assumption that Mr. Veneer, the original developer, was going to develop Phase One and then develop Phase Two in accordance with this plan. So the, the covenants and the common areas and everything were set up to cover the full 94 acres. And then, so, our, we have, we have set up a meeting for next Monday, August 8th, involving the director of utilities and finance and others to see if it is, if the city can come up with a plan for designing, acquiring easements and constructing the waterline loop over to Markley Road at this time. There's no funds budgeted for that, and so, that, that is something that, that would need to occur in order for Phase One to occur. So, we think that there's a number of unresolved issues relating to the infrastructure to support this Phase Two, relating to the waterline extension, the relocation of the emergency access road, whether in fact a sewer lift station is absolutely necessary. And then, the concern that was raised, we have read the covenants. We've had gotten attorneys to read the covenants, and it appears to us that it would take a two-thirds vote of the unit owners or lot owners to change the status of these green areas here from common area to private development property. And then, I was just, I'm going to read a quote from the city's subdivision regulations, because it, again, it goes back to planning commission's judgment. And so, the, a section in the subdivision regulations as it relates to lot layout in Section 3671E states that land, which the planning commission finds to be unsuitable for development due to flooding, improper drainage, steep slopes, rock formation, adverse topography, or other features which will be reasonably harmful to the safety, health and general welfare of the inhabitants of the land and surrounding areas, shall not be developed unless adequate methods are formulated by the developer and approved by the planning commission to solve the problems created by the unsuitable land conditions. And so, it's, it's our belief that the original plan and the designation of the common areas was based on the conclusion that because of floodplain here and because of ravines, topography and wooded areas here, that this, this was designated as common area because it was environmentally sensitive, and that it was, had steep to severe slopes and would require massive regrading and tree removal to make that developable. And so, that is, that is a judgment call for you as planning commissioners to, to determine whether those areas with the steep slopes and trees and rock formations are suitable or unsuitable for development. And so, our, our main concern as, as to layout is that the layout didn't seem to take into account the areas that had been set aside as, as common areas in the master plan, and didn't seem to take into account existing topography. And then, we believe there are infrastructure issues relating to the need for the looped water line and the question of whether there's a lift station or, or no lift station. And so, just for the benefit of the commission, we had the plat done in 2003. And in 2008, Mr. Veneer deeded the, what is designated as common area on this drawing, and it extends up into the north area as well. And he deeded that whole area, which includes also the Phase Two buildable area, to the River Run Homeowners Association. Then in the 2011, the Homeowners Association deeded it back to Veneer Properties. And so, what has not been developed, from what we can tell, is an accurate legal description that describes the area that was intended to be common area separate from the Phase Two lot area. And so, in 2000, in this year, Veneer Properties deeded 23.74 acres to River Run Estates, and the description included the common area and did not differentiate common area from buildable area. And so, part of what needs to come out of all this is to get an, an accurate description and long-term, for the benefit of all the future owners, the areas designated as common area need to be described, and they need to be put together in a deed so that the common area is under the control and management of the Homeowners Association and not Veneer Properties. And that, that needs to happen at some point. So, our, our recommendation on items 3.3A and 3.3B is this is a public hearing. We should hear comments and concerns. We feel that until the August 8th meeting, when we can discuss the feasibility of the waterline loop can occur, that the planning commission would be somewhat getting out ahead of itself because we don't know the timeliness and the feasibility of, of getting that waterline loop in place. But we do think that this should be, is an advertised public hearing, and that you should hear comments from the applicant, from interested property owners in the vicinity. And then, I would open by letting you ask questions of staff about our report, but this is a, this is a two-part request. One is to change what's currently agricultural zone property to residential property. The second part of that is changing the layout. And I will just close by saying in, in 2016, Mr. Veneer did try to final plat this Phase Two area, and his, his Phase Two plat was an exact match of the original master plan, and it did not move forward because the city had not resolved the issue of, of designing, financing and building the waterline loop. And so, that, that was eventually withdrawn. And so, the, the primary difference here is that this Phase Two plan is not, is not consistent with the original master plan, and that, that is what has created some of these challenges. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have about River Run.
I just wanted to clarify one thing, Dean. So, Mr. Veneer originally deeded the commons area to the Homeowners Association, and then the Homeowners Association deeded them back to Mr. Veneer?
Yes, but at the time that he did it, Mr. Veneer was the Homeowners Association, which is why he could do that deeding. The, I think what he realized, and I can't be sure of this, but I, I think he realized that he inadvertently deeded this sure of this, but I, I think he realized that he inadvertently deeded this whole Phase Two area over to the Homeowners Association, and he didn't mean to, because if the Homeowners Association had it, that means it's not developable. And so, I think that the issue was that the, the deed to the Homeowners Association included every square foot of this Phase Two area, and I don't think he meant to do that and realized that he couldn't really sell that or do anything with it unless it was in the title of Vaneer Properties and not the association.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody got any more questions for staff? Okay, can we have the applicant come forward?
Good evening, Derek Lee, 829 East Crawford. Love to review a few things. One, obviously when we purchased this from Mr. Vaneer, this was a piece of property, you know, Phase One, many of the lots have sat empty for some time, particularly the smaller lots. The lots on the west side with views that are larger, all of those are sold and developed. If you would, Dustin, further up, where it kind of shows the green space and overlays it with the other lots, oh, Dustin's not here.
It's just me, so yes.
Okay.
There you go.
Margie? So, if you take a look at some of the lots in Phase One, if you were to compare what's greened out versus what's white, you're going to have more space on our lots than you do those. I guess my point is, we're not looking at small lots here, we're looking at lots that start at 1.2 and go up to 4.1 acres, right? These are not anything like what's in Phase One. In fact, the largest home in Phase One, which would be similar in size to what would get built in Phase Two, he had to buy two lots together, and he's about 1.19 acres. Our smallest lot is 1.2, and they go up to 4.1. So again, the topography that is there, if you want to scoot back down a little bit, that green area can be tough to build on, but there is enough white space there. If you compare that space to the size of a lot in Phase One, there's enough space on every one of those per the engineer to build a home. Yes, they're probably going to build something kind of like what's along that slope in Phase One, where they come out and build into the cliffside, and that's absolutely a desirable feature. And it was the opinion of the engineer that every one of those lots can build something spectacular along there, especially with the space given. And I understand the green space, which again was deeded back to Mr. Vaneer before he sold it to us, and that common space, as it would exist now, would be behind a very large home. And I guess my concern there would be privacy-wise, having unusable space. I mean, it's a cliffside, but if that were an open space, I'm worried what that would mean for the homeowner that owns that, that home on that same space as far as that not being their property. That'd be my biggest concern there. And again, plenty of that green space exists in Phase One, where it takes up half of a lot or more. So, again, happy to look at it, but that would be my concern there. Again, Mr. Vaneer, his opinion was that he owned that land, not the Homeowners Association, and that he was in control of the Homeowners Association. In Article 9, Subsection 2, it states that "The Association may acquire, hold, and dispose of tangible and intangible personal property and real property." And it's his opinion and his attorneys that they were absolutely within their rights to do that. You know, everything we're looking at in Phase Two is to benefit Phase One. Our goal is to become really good neighbors for Phase One. And if I were in Phase One and I were looking at 44 units coming in as a possibility versus 11, if there's two cars per home, we're talking about 88 cars in and out, there's one way in and out of Phase One. There's not even a second road there to be your firetruck entrance. You have no second emergency entrance in Phase One. You don't have water pressure for large homes that currently exist. What we're offering is to take, instead of 88 cars a day in and out of there, 22, and a second entrance that gives an emergency entrance, and adequate water pressure, and build up what is there. If you'll go back to the plat, Margie? And while that's getting pulled up, yes, the intention is to match the street and the sidewalk. That would be along the east side where the sidewalk already exists. That would be our intention again. And we do connect that sidewalk to a trail that goes down to the meadow area, and that is in the plat. All right, so if we can make that much bigger and kind of zoom in on the south end, if you would. If you would, keep zooming in a bit there. There you go. So, there is a 10-foot access easement in between Lot 4 and Lot 5. That is to put a path in. Again, the sidewalk will connect and run along the east side, and it will go all the way to the access easement. That's access easement, again, a trail to go down to the trail in the meadow. So again, for Phase One, our intention is to give you adequate water pressure, to give you a second emergency entrance, to give you a walking trail that connects all the way down to the walking trail in the meadow, to do everything in our power to increase the value of what is in Phase One, not to do anything to hurt what is there. There would be four lots. If we don't put a pump station in, if the city doesn't want a pump station, I understand serving 11 homes is not a large amount of homes. I would be curious what the property tax generated on those 11 homes versus other pump stations would look like, but we could also understand there are four lots that would then have to put individual pump stations in their homes, and that is absolutely fine. That is agreeable. We can work with that. Got that. Yeah, the, I know the engineers, Earl's Engineering is here today, and Elizabeth can speak to the other manhole option that we have. But, yeah, I do believe we've addressed most of the items on here. Again, our, our intention is to build something really special in the city of Salina. I know these are not the lots we normally look at. Again, there's a lot of topography there, but again, we're looking at 1.2 to 4.1 acre lots. And, you know, they're, they're significant size, and every one of them has buildable area to put a home on. But yeah, something very special for the city. Would love to stand for questions now or later, or have Elizabeth from Earl's Engineering come up and give her input on it.
Well, I've, Mr. Lee, I've ridden my bicycle up there before, and I think those are going to be some fantastic lots, number one. Number two, I don't know how you get that kind of acreage inside the city, so those are going to be quite, quite special. It's going to be a nice, nice place.
We do have, and we should have sent, we have some fly-throughs and drive-throughs that, from the engineering specs, have been put together to show what it's going to look like to drive through there, and it really is amazing. You know, these, these will be the last Vantage Point lots in the city of Salina. We know from, you know, one home that's already being planned to be built on one of the significant slope lots, that they looked for the better part of a decade to try to find a place to build a home like that. There's nothing else out there, this is it. So when these are done, this is it for Vantage Point lots in the city of Salina.
What are we looking at price range on these lots?
We would, on the east side where you don't have a western slope view, you would start at somewhere around $200,000. That is commensurate per square foot or per acreage with other lots that have sold in Phase One that don't have a view. On the west side, those lots will go up to and just over a million dollars. That's a lot of money, but again, that's commensurate with what other western-facing lots in Phase One have brought, if you look at it from an acreage or a square footage standpoint. And one of those is pre-sold if and when the project moves forward.
Okay, anybody got more questions for Mr. Lee? Anybody got any questions for Earl's? See if they got anything.
Does, does the date of the 16th or the September 6th, which one of those would work better for you?
Elizabeth, does the 16th work? Do I have everything ready?
Yes.
And I know we've got the meeting Monday with the city from utility perspective.
On the 15th on Monday, and then, so the 16th is fine on Tuesday?
Yes.
I think it's going to take longer than that to work out the impasse as it relates to the common area. So, if you want to look at it from the standpoint, Dustin, if you can flip back to our map of the common area. So, if you're a property buyer in Phase One who bought one of these lots here, and you, you bought that lot because your lot abuts common area which cannot be developed or disturbed, and that is one of the reasons that you made the investment to purchase that lot, because you knew and understood that that could not be developed, it upsets the original plan of development to suddenly say, well, this isn't common area anymore, this is an area that's going to be left undeveloped or undisturbed, it's now part of a platted lot. And I, I'm not sure how you can jump from having that be a common area to a, a lot for development without having some involvement of these owners who, who bought their property with the understanding that that was common area and not have an opportunity to participate in the decision whether that would cease to be common area.
So, backing up to my earlier question, and so, at the time that those lots in Phase One were sold, who owned the commons area?
Common area was owned by Mr. Vaneer.
So, I, I guess to me, what?
Well, I, I guess I'll ask a question to you.
Okay.
What, what makes this green area common area and this green area not common area? What, how, how would that, how would that decision be made?
Well, I presume because of the floodplain and proximity to the river, but I don't know that.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, I guess, I guess my question, when, when the people bought in Lot 1, I mean, in Phase 1, did the common area on paper exist or not exist?
It existed on this plan, this plan for common development.
If I might interject, that green space where you're showing it abutting the other lots, there's not going to be a structure built there. That is really steep cliff, that's going to be somebody's view. So, that area, you know, you're looking at Lot 1, so instead of having three and a half lots backing up to Phase 1, you have one. So instead of somebody close to your home, you're going to have an extraordinary home in the middle and a lot of landscaping you're probably not going to see. You know, we've placed 10,000 square foot homes on each of these lots, and you'd be surprised how little of it it takes. These are significant lots.
So, if this is the buildable area, what difference does it make whether this undevelopable, undisturbed green space is common area that's undeveloped and for preserved as open space versus making it part of somebody's lot?
Privacy and security. If you were building a multimillion dollar home, I don't think you would want common area that people could walk up to the edge of your home on. I, I believe you'd want that to be your space, even if other people obviously view through it and view it, you would not want other people walking through what's essentially your backyard, even though it's not going to be built on. That's not even feasible.
Then what would you propose to keep it from being built on if it's not common area?
Physics. You, you can't build on a cliff.
You could try.
It's almost.
What, what would you do to prevent that from being buildable area if it's not common area? If you wanted to assure these residents who bought these lots here that this isn't going to get bulldozed and the trees removed, what would you propose to make sure that doesn't happen?
We could look at the feasibility on Lot 1, the only one that abuts that property, at determining a line past which a home could not be built that would be similar to the previous common area. That's what I would propose.
An elevation line?
Yeah, an elevation line that is assumably where that's along. Again, that green area, that's really, really steep. So, we would look at the feasibility of stating that there'd be a point past which you could not build the home on the lot. It would still be your lot, but you could not build past that point so that it preserved the view for those that bought those lots in Phase 1.
Yeah, our, our experience is exact opposite in working with areas like in Upper Mill Heights and other areas where those owners worked to preserve certain areas as common area or conservation easements to make sure that they weren't developed and not, not made part of a building lot.
And there could be a work through on that, leaving it as common space where people could walk through or rock climate, I don't know. I, I just would be, if I were wanting to purchase that lot, it would bother me to know that a portion of my lot were essentially public space. But, leaving it undisturbed, we could absolutely.
And if I were to buy this lot, I would be bothered by the fact that the property behind me, which was assured to be left undisturbed and wooded, could potentially be developed or trees removed or regraded.
And again, we could find a workaround for that. I, I would also think that their issue would possibly be with the previous owner who ended up owning the land and selling it. But again, we can work through that and come up with a way to, to have that not be disturbed from what it is now, while also providing some security to the person that would buy Lot 1 there.
Since this is a public hearing and it's going to be continued and stuff, have we heard from anybody in Phase 1?
Yes, we have. Quite a number of people.
And are they here?
Some, some of them are here, some of them are represented here.
Okay. So, do we have some folks that would like to speak on this that live in that area?
I'm Sid Ritz.
Okay, would you like to step forward, please?
To answer your questions, you guys, I don't know that I have a lot to speak on. I can tell you, my wife and I purchased the first lot up there, so I think we were probably the second people to move in. I think one of the townhomes was done ahead of us. We own the lot. Clear at the end up there, Dean, with your pointer.
This one here?
Yeah, Lot 1. So this doesn't totally affect us. We have the path to the meadow that runs to the, that would be to the east of our house. It goes through by our property, actually goes part on our property, part on the common area, and goes down to the meadow there. Is how the access there, and then there's access to the meadow from Marymount Road. But, so, we need access for the people that live at this end would definitely need access to the meadow from the other side. Are they, are they going to go an awful long way? I think the real issue here is probably Mr. Vaneer not following his own rules, I would say. I don't know the legal issues on all of what he's done. It concerns me that he deeded that into, when he deeded all of that ground into the Homeowners Association, I think technically he probably, all of the covenants are binding on that ground. And so when he deeded it out of there, they're still binding on that ground. But I don't know how he could deed it in and deed it out himself. And I think it's the houses that back on that that kind of have the concern of losing that common area in there and preserving the trees and, and all of that that's on there. I don't think anybody objects to the development of it or the original plat, because that's what was proposed originally is what, you know, is what everybody knew that they were buying into. But it's those changes, I think, of that common area. And I think if something can be worked out there, it's probably fine. I mean, I agree with Mr. Lee that 11 lots is a lot better than, I think he said 44 lots, you know, I, I don't, and getting rid of all those little lots down there in the bottom, they were really not very good to begin with. So, I don't think anybody objects to that, and I don't know that moving the road is a, is a huge issue, probably. I think the big thing is figuring out something for those homes that back onto there, probably. Anything else, Thomas?
Dean, but is that, in Phase 1, are those two, are those two different lots? Okay, have we heard from them?
Yes. And they're asserting that that's common area that they don't believe that there is authority to remove.
Okay, so we will get some correspondence from them or something?
I have correspondence to that effect, yes.
The house that Derek referred to actually was built on one lot there. And then after he built his house, the neighbor next door that built next to us bought half of that lot just to kind of protect him. But there's a vacant lot actually between those two homes. And I don't know exactly how many square foot are in the big home, but probably 8,000 or so would be my guess offhand on there.
Is there a situation between Aaron and Todd?
No, between Aaron and Todd, there is no lot. Between Aaron and Christie and Tom Jarrett, there's a lot. And they bought that... Jarrett's... Aaron bought that and then sold half of the lot to Tom and Christie. And then that's... Otherwise, the lots are pretty much the way they are. There's two lots... Well, you can see there's two lots up there in the middle.
I think this house is on two lots, where they bought two lots and combined them.
Dr. Elmore's house?
Yeah, so they bought two lots and combined them into a single lot.
Part of the problem is the way the utilities are laid out up there is it's hard to get driveways and things because we've got the electrical boxes all in the front, the sewers are in the front.
Yes, everything's in the front. Because of the terrain in the back, everybody wants to be in front. And so space is at a premium in front, and you have to really carefully plan when you've got... When you're building a driveway or running a water line from into your home or doing a sprinkler system, you've got to really mind yourself that you have cable, electric, gas, sewer, water, all in that front space. And it has to be really carefully... There's a lot to navigate through just to do something like running a water service line.
Yeah, that's the real problem.
So I guess what I'm looking at right now, or what we're looking at right now is we're going to have to have some kinds of agreement or some kind of consensus before we can even move forward on...
Well, as Mr. Lee advanced, there are means and methods to have the same effect of common area on a private lot, but that's done through things like conservation easements or it's done through things like... There is... If you drive up Upper Mill Heights, there's areas there that are platted lots that are open space and they have restrictive covenants on them that keep them from being built upon. And so there's ways to protect natural areas and slopes and other things other than common area. But if it's not common area and it's not designated or restricted in some other way, then whoever buys that lot is free to grade, bulldoze, or do anything else. And that is the concern, that the common area protects those areas from being regraded or trees removed or sloped in some way. And if it's not common area, it has to be protected some other way.
So then what we're looking at now is for Mr. Lee and the city to come up with a solution before they bring it back to us and...
Well, there would have to be alternate means and methods to see if there's a different way to treat that like common area and not have it be common area. But none of this, and that's... We emphasize time and time again, this is a master planned community. It was master planned in 2003, and we've tried to stay faithful to that vision. This doesn't follow that vision. And the biggest point in 2003 was that the land planner went in and said, these areas should be off limits to development or change or regrading. And so they're going to be common area. And the area that we've designated there in green was shown as common area. And so people bought lots based on that being common area. And it is equal common area to this common area. And one of the reasons that we insisted... This is a 94 acre tract, and 41.43 acres are up in this area, and 52.8 acres make up the balance. This plan is to develop 23.74 acres. That leaves 29 acres plus this that needs to be accounted for. And the way that this becomes common area that everybody can enjoy and benefit is to incorporate it into the plat for River Run Phase Two, so it's labeled and there's notes and everybody can rely on that being common area. There's nothing in place except the covenants today that make that common area. It will become common area when it's platted and the plat's recorded and that's designated as common area. So what I'm trying to emphasize is this was always intended to be a Phase One and Phase Two. And this Phase Two, as lofty as it might be to have 11 lots instead of 36, is a substantial change from the original. And when you change something substantially from the original plan, you're going to run into things because the infrastructure original was designed based on the original layout and not this layout. And so there's going to be challenges when you change the vision from what was originally master planned. And we have tried to emphasize that from day one.
So all of this green area is Phase Two, correct? Or common area is Phase Two?
It is part of Phase Two, and it needs to be part of the Phase Two plat. And Mr. Veneer will have to be a party to this plat, and he will have to be the one signing off on that to make it common area for the benefit of others. Apparently, this part and this part are... That is a matter of dispute as to whether that is common area. This part, it seems that everybody agrees that it should be common area, but it's not going to be designated as platted common area until this Phase Two is platted.
So even the common areas that are disputed are not official common areas because they have not been platted? Is that correct?
That is correct. They're shown as common area on the master plan and they're referred to as common area in the covenants. So again, I'll try to emphasize again, this road was planned to go like this, and this is Great Life Fitness. And this was not supposed to be housing or developing lots. It's just supposed to be green space between the road and Great Life Fitness. And the road was swung over here to follow the terrain and to maximize the amount of flat area was available to build on. As soon as you move the road over here, from here, you have transferred this flat area to this side of the street, but you have reduced the amount of flat buildable area on this side of the street, as evidenced by this finger that's coming through here. And the reason that finger is there is because that's all very steeply sloped, 50 to 60-foot elevation changes, and heavily vegetated. And it's... There's no way to build a house right here without filling in a ravine and removing a whole bunch of trees. And that everyone needs to be clear about that, that it's... There's not a single flat area that you could build a house on right here today without a substantial grading and without substantial removal of trees. And we're just making that as clear as we can make it.
As a point of reference, just to add context, the contour lines that we have on our map are two-foot contours, meaning every purple line you see is a change of elevation of two feet. And so where you have the wooded area, the cliff area, you can see how dense the drop off is by the density of the lines. And so that's what Mr. Andrew is talking about, is developing along this cliff frontage here, which is also the common area in the covenants.
And I could see development of Lot One and Lot Two, but Lot Three is concerning. Do you have something to speak to that, Mr. Lee?
I do, yeah. I know at least when Earl's Engineering went out and scanned it and proposed putting a house on each one, they have plans to do so. At the same time, we'll review that. I think September 6th probably is the smarter option at this point. And we'll look into and work with the city on what a conservation easement would look like where that's still part of a lot you purchased on Lot One. If you would go back to the original, you know, the master plan was done 19 years ago. It wasn't viable because the smaller lots never sold. It ended up where this land got deeded back as agriculture. But, you know, if I had purchased, we're talking about Lot Five and Six up there in Phase One, you know, the plan was to have your view essentially be a road and some very small townhomes. And knowing what we're going to put in and leave that area alone, I think is very preferable. And if we set that as a conservation easement and not a common area, that we'd be able to work with the owners of all those lots along there and have their buy-in once they see what our intentions are.
And is a conservation easement something that would satisfy your department as far as...
Well, it's not me who needs to be satisfied. It's the owners of these lots who bought those lots with the understanding that this would be undisturbed green space behind their homes, who now find themselves with proposed building lots behind their homes instead of open green space.
But I think a conservation easement with no townhomes and road would be far preferable to common space plus rows of townhomes and a road, as far as your view adds. I think we can improve upon what they understood they were getting when they bought in Phase One. And again, had any of those owners reached out to us, would have been more than happy to share our intention and show them that what we can provide will be better than what they expected, not less than. I would have the same concern if that was a buildable space and somebody were going to build a home there, but that is just not what we're doing.
So I think we need to work this out.
So we're just saying that absent another mechanism that's not common area, such as a conservation easement or some other mechanism, we as a staff and you as a commission don't have any way to give assurances to those people that that won't at some point be modified, deforested, regraded. The only way to assure that is either it's common area or it's part of a platted lot that is off limits to development.
Sounds like a plan?
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreeance.
And I would invite any concerned party to attend the public hearings as well so we could all get feedback on that.
Yeah. Again, our intention when it's done is to have everybody in Phase One say, thanks, that helped, right?
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak to this while we get... Mr. Pestinger?
Tom Pestinger, 1800 South Marymount. You know, I'm all in favor of what they're doing here. I think those would be some beautiful lots. The only concern that I have is when we do... Right now, Great Life is at the end of the waterline, and that is not a good place to be. I can tell you that. It's problem after problem after problem. Another thing is I'd really like to look at the sewer. Possibly, right now, we do have an injector pump that pumps from basically the lower part of the poolhouse clear to Marymount Road. Another concern is the extra drive for the fire department, which is a good thing. I'm all for that. Will that ever become... Will our drive into Great Life ever become a street where people will use that in and out? Or is this a... Will this be a gated?
Well, the way it would be is designed is it would be gated and have a Knox box and key so that the only people using it would be the fire department. There actually was, and it was when it was the Elks Club, but there actually was some discussion about converting this road here to a public street and bringing in a second street to River Run here. And Mr. Veneer, which I have a copy of here, filed a covenant agreeing to participate in a benefit district to pay for converting this to a public street. We don't think that's going to happen, so what would happen is that there would be an easement that would just be across the piece between where the River Run boundary ends and where your pavement begins. And it would allow a fire apparatus to come through here, go through this gate, and get into Overlook Drive on the chance that something happened that blocked the River Run Parkway entrance. So it is a second emergency way in. And I guess while we have you at the podium, I have a question of whether you have traced the source of electricity for your pumps, that pump, irrigation pumps on that property to the south? Because my notes tell me that the power for that comes through here and comes down here to power your pumps. And those poles and wires are very inconveniently located as far as developing this. And so there's going to have to be some coordination and alternate easements provided so that you can continue to get power to your irrigation pumps.
I believe the lines go down that red line, then they cut across. And I have not looked at where they go west.
Okay.
But I know they go down to that corner.
Yeah, because I had, in 2003, I had several meetings with Westar, now Evergy, about rerouting those, but we never rerouted them, but we wanted to make sure that we weren't cutting off the power to those pumps.
Yeah, we definitely need those. And this is just a question, too. On the common area, is that common area, is that open to the public?
No, it's open to people who own lots there in terms of... It's very similar to at Highland Meadows Hamlet over on the south side of Magnolia Road. They have an area that's along the Smoky Hill River along the west side there, and they've got a walking path there. And that's not... It's owned and maintained for the benefit of lot owners in Highland Meadows Hamlet, so it's not a public park. And this would not be a public park. It would just... It's a benefit and amenity for the people who own lots there. So it's limited to as common area for the benefit of lot owners in River Run, not the general public.
Yeah, that's what I figured, but I was just curious. That's all I have. Like I said, if we do something on sewer and water and things like that is what I'm concerned about.
Okay.
If we build that waterline loop over to Markley Road, we're probably going to be talking to you anyway about that, so...
And to add to what they're talking about with the common area, there is common area in the first phase, the plat that exists and the development that exists here today, Mr. Ritz was speaking of. But you can see it here on the aerial photo that there's common area that kind of wraps around the north edge of the property that gives the adjacent property owners access to the common area as well as the meadow area that's down at the bottom of the subdivision.
And just to further, again, explain why the full 94 acres was not platted in 2003 was that there's a provision in state law that if you have property that is unplatted, that is special assessed for improvements, you can defer the assessments on that until the property is platted or 15 years, whichever occurred first. So Mr. Veneer was able to defer special assessments on the south area from Marymount Road and a waterline. And the way that he was able to avail himself of that was by not final plating the south area. So otherwise, this would already be platted and we'd be talking about a replat. But the reason for not plating... But the, the reason for not plating the southern Phase 2 area was to allow Mr. Vanir to avail himself of a deferred payment on those assessments.
Any more public comment? Anybody online?
Does not appear we have anyone who wants to speak online.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll bring it back up to the commission for some action on the...
I, I think that since these are so closely tied together, and we've referred to this as a public hearing on plans for developing Phase 2 of the River Run addition, that you could have a motion to continue the public hearing on developing Phase 2 of River Run addition to, I think the date I heard was September 6.
September 6.
So I, I think a motion that would combine 3.3A and B into a single motion to continue today's public hearing until September 6 would be appropriate.
I move that we move the public hearing to September 6, 2022, combining items 3.3A and 3.3B for Phase 2 River Run Estates.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay. That passes 5-0, and we'll defer that to September 6. Okay. That drops us down to...
Mr. Chair, can we have a five-minute recess?
Sure.
If you want to.
Give the...
Chair can announce if, if you wish to have a, a brief recess and to reconvene at 6:55.
Yep.
Okay. Give people a chance to get a drink or stretch or use the facilities, so.
Thank you. Someone's been here long.
[laughing][732.13]
And one of the discussions was the need for emergency access easement and the plan was to have an emergency access road off the north end of Foxborough Drive. Since that meeting, we have gotten with our floodplain mapping consultant and we have determined that the levee section north of Foxborough Drive could be lowered or completely removed so that you could have an at-grade crossing instead of what we discussed before, which was having the fire apparatus come in and sloping up a crossing of the levee and sloping on the other side to come down. So that option is now available. And then, the final step occurred on June 27th of this year when a rural housing incentive district was, the formation of that was approved by the city commission and for the benefit of the planning commission, a lot of our residential subdivisions in Salina, including River Run, which we just discussed, utilize special assessment financing. And this will not utilize special assessment financing, but will utilize the RHID method of financing. And so primarily, the way that works is it allows for the developers to be reimbursed for infrastructure costs from the property tax that's generated by the new dwelling units that are constructed. And so, that has been approved as a financing mechanism in lieu of using special assessments. So in terms of our next steps, we have to finalize the infrastructure plans, which would include designing the extension of Lindbergh Lane out to Centennial Road and the proposed improvements to that intersection, as well as the emergency access road connecting to Foxborough. And so, that would be in addition to the interior infrastructure. And then, we have a final plat application and drawing. So this is coming back for final plat approval. The proposal is to subdivide the area into 170 lots. And Dustin, on one of these plans, we have the phasing plan or the dividing line, if you have that. So for the commission's benefit, the original plan was to develop this in phases and by constructing the fire access road connecting to Foxborough Drive, that allows Phase One to develop, but Phase Two cannot develop until there is a second public street connection to most likely Magnolia Road. So...
Yeah. I just take me a moment.
Okay, so we're temporarily without our drawings, so I'm gonna, this yellow line that you see highlighted there, so the Phase One development is gonna occur up to this line and then they won't be able to install infrastructure or build lots till they have a second connection, public street connection into the subdivision. I believe Dustin, we had a drawing in the packet that showed possible future connections? I don't know if we have it in your presentation, but the options would be to go from the northeast corner over to the northeast and to Virginia Drive. Or the other option would be to have a connection out of the north end of the subdivision. And the principals involved with Aeroplanes have had some correspondence and discussions with Mr. Sponder, who opens this, owns this property here, and he is receptive to granting a public street right-of-way that would allow a street connection here up to Magnolia Road. And at such time that that occurred, that would allow the rest of this area to fully develop. So that is the timing on that. So, just some things to understand is that, as you can see, this property is essentially landlocked, it's bordered by stream channels on the east and west and a levee on the south. There is a 35-foot Evergy Transmission Line easement on the west. There's a 30-foot Interceptor Sewer Line easement that's along the south and then goes into the corner of that property. And then, there's a gas pipeline easement that crosses the property from south to north, just west of Foxborough Drive. All of those things has affected the design and will need to be clearly denoted on the So, our only comment as to street names is the proposed street names are Lindbergh Lane, Steve Holly Lane, Tim Rogers Lane, Amelia Lane, Wright Lane, Fossett Lane, Neil Armstrong Lane, Aldrin Lane, and Jaeger Lane. So there is an aeronautic theme to those. And the only thing we noted is that Neil Armstrong spells his first name, N-E-I-L, not N-E-A-L. So if we're gonna properly honor astronaut Neil Armstrong, then we would just modify the spelling of that. And so, the reason for that is we have a Rogers Court, a Holly Lane, that's pronounced the same, spelled differently, and then there's an Armstrong Road in the county. So to avoid any 911 conflicts, we've added first names to those streets to avoid comments. You have the discretion to approve or disapprove street names or consider whether you think they're too similar to any existing names. There's 170 lots. You can see how they're laid out and divided. The only real impact is over here, there's the street, and then there's an easement here for Evergy Transmission Line. That will require the houses on the west side here to be set back a little farther than normal to stay out of that easement. We have adequate water service from a 12-inch line that runs along the north side of the property that was installed for the Menards Project. There's a benefit fee associated with that. The city engineers have approved the storm drainage calculations and the plan is to have a pond over here in the far southeast corner. That would be nine feet deep and then that would be, water stored in that pond would be pumped into Dry Creek with a pump at a controlled rate. I think we've addressed emergency response and emergency access. The closest available play area to this property is a small park or playground area north of Schilling Elementary School. So if we, if we're able to lower this levee crossing and have this connection here, not only would that be for fire access, but that would also allow pedestrian access to get to Schilling School and that play area. One thing we wanna clarify is the use of the easements, front and back, as to if there's been a final decision on where Evergy's gonna go, in the front or back, that's gonna dictate some of the layout and uses of these rear areas. We did not include in your packet the results of a traffic study that was done, but the projected daily traffic counts was 2,448 vehicle trips exiting through that Lindbergh Lane intersection with Centennial Road. And so, that's about a 55% increase from existing volumes. And so, that study recommended the construction of a turn lane for southbound traffic on Centennial Road. And so, we've got the option as it relates to the detention pond, to either create a homeowners association to own and maintain it and/or pay a maintenance fee and have the city own and maintain it. Early or preliminary indications are that the preference would be to have that dedicated to the city for maintenance. So we're talking about 9,000 lineal feet of internal street and 210-foot long connection out to Centennial Road. We're talking about sidewalks on both sides of all the internal streets and a sidewalk on Lindbergh Lane out to Centennial Road. Possible construction of a pedestrian path to go with the emergency access road to tie into Foxborough Drive. And all utilities will have to be placed underground. The only impact fees or benefit fees are for the 12-inch water line that was installed as part of the Menards Project. There are neighborhood park fees and those are collected when a building permits issued. And as we indicated, the proposed Phase One would consist of 75 lots and the interim access road. Phase Two would be the 94 lots east of Wright Lane and a second public street connection. And as we noted, the developers have received approval to form an RHID. We do not have a draft set of covenants at this time, although the owners have indicated that they plan to maintain some green spaces. There's a green space, it's not a lot down in here, and that may serve as a location for community mailboxes for the subdivision. And then, there's a green space common area next to the creek there. So what we're hoping to get resolved at today's meeting, we have, most of these are things that are tasks for the engineer or surveyor and not necessarily for the developers themselves. But there is gonna be a requirement for the surveyor who did the work on this to submit closure calculations confirming that the property boundaries all close and that section corner reports are submitted for the review of the county surveyor. County surveyor has to sign off on this plat before it's recorded. We have questions about this area out here, it's 143 feet wide, and we're trying to get confirmation of whether that entire 143 feet will be dedicated as right-of-way by the airport authority or whether there will be some dedicated right-of-way within that area with the rest retained by the airport authority. We wanna clarify whether the intersection of Lindbergh Lane with Centennial Road will be two-lane design or three-lane design with dedicated right and left turn lanes. We need the surveyor to tie down these, this gas line easement and this transmission line easement so they can be located in the field. We need to clarify whether the developers plan to build the emergency access road at grade or continue to go over the top of the existing levee. We would ask that the applicants clarify whether the townhomes will be served by electrical service from transformers located in the front or rear yard utility easements. And to clarify whether those rear easements will be exclusively utility easements or serve a dual purpose as utility and drainage easements, if they're utility only, how the rear yard areas will drain. So you can see, these are pretty long blocks that are linear and laid out. In some of our subdivisions, we've had concrete drainage flumes put in that carry the water to the ends of the block and make sure the water doesn't get trapped in the subdivision. If we're doing that, we need to make sure those are utility and drainage easements and not just utility easements. So, we think that this is in order for your action this evening. We have outlined 14 conditions and some of them deal with infrastructure and the emergency access road. But I think what we'd like to focus on this evening is questions 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7 on page 12 and 13 of your report to get an indication of the plan for this 143-foot area, whether it's gonna be all right-of-way or whether the airport authority's gonna retain part of it. To clarify, I think, I don't know if you have it in your slides Dustin, but we do have a cross-section of what that intersection was supposed to look like that we put in your packets. I wanted to note that the engineer working on the plat, we asked for a cross-section of the levee crossing and they gave us the same cross-section that showed going over the top of the existing levee. And so, that caused us to ask the question of whether that's gonna go over the top of the levee or be at grade. And then, we wanna clarify the status of those easements in the back. So, if you could go back Dustin, go back to that. So, this is where the subdivision boundary ends, this is the connection coming out. We had a late break, so we're wanting to confirm whether this right here, which we can't really tell whether this is two lanes only or whether it's a dedicated left turn lane and a dedicated right turn lane. We think based on having one way out and the volume of traffic, that it would be advantageous to have a three-lane section there with both dedicated left and right turn lanes. But we had a development that occurred right before the meeting where we had a meeting with property owner to the north of this road right here, who has a building here, and that owner currently has an access easement already granted to them by the airport authority. And so, what we think that might result in is we're just, this area right here is the same area where Lindbergh Lane would come out and there's actually an existing curb cut here and an ingress egress easement here that allows trucks going to this building to pull in here and back into these loading docks. That would be a really not-good situation to have with the main entrance road coming into the subdivision. So what we're thinking we need to do is work with the developers and their designer to come up with a plan that both preserves this access to here, that's already provided for through this easement, and keeps Lindbergh Lane over here and don't have the two conflicting so we can make sure, so that that may result in some dipping down here of, we wanna cross this creek at perpendicular, we want this to be perpendicular. We may just have to shift this slightly to the south to accommodate the access here, which is kinda, but there's a building here with loading docks that face this way and the existing access easement comes right through here. So, we're gonna work to coordinate those two things. But it's our belief that Lindbergh Lane would function at a much higher level if we had dedicated left and right turn lanes so that someone wanting to exit and turn right didn't have to wait behind somebody waiting a long time to make a left turn. So, with that, we provided you a lot of information, but our focus would be on clarifying whether this is all gonna be right-of-way and that may be something that only the airport authority can answer. Clarifying whether this is gonna be left and right turn lanes out. Clarifying whether the crossing of the levee will be at grade or there's still a plan to ramp and go over the levee and to clarify location of electric service and how the rear easements will be used. So with that, I'd be open to any questions about the final plat.
Okay, anybody got any questions for staff?
So, usually on things like that, all the heavy lifting is done at the preliminary plat stage. We think we got most of things ironed out at the preliminary plat stage and this review is primarily to look at, see if anything is dramatically changed since the preliminary plat and this plat is completely consistent with the preliminary plat that you reviewed and approved in March, so.
Okay. Do we wanna have the applicant step up and see if they can answer some of these other questions that we've got on here?
Yeah, we could, we could kind of go, and it's not fair to ask them to say what the airport authority is doing, but the, this, I mean, this should show either a right-of-way coming through here that's 70, 80 feet wide for the street or we just designate the whole piece as street right-of-way. That, that's just something that needs to be clarified and then whether we're looking at left and right turn lanes out or a single lane, our recommendation is that the intersection be designed to provide dedicated left and right turn lanes for exiting traffic, so.
So, yes to...
Could both of you please state your names, so for the clerk?
Derek Lee, 829 East Crawford.
Lance Cochran, 763 Victoria Heights Terrace.
So, to answer the question first, since that's up, yes, there are two lanes there, a left turn lane and a, a left turn lane and a right turn lane. That's why it expands out there and should've been marked more clearly, but yes, that was to accommodate a left and a right turn lane. As for the easement, yes, we learned just this evening that the airport authority had given two people that easement, but it's not a big deal and...
Yeah, there's room to accommodate both, it's just a design consideration. We have 143 feet to work with, we can accommodate both, but we didn't want, I don't think the developers want semi-trucks hanging out into their entrance, nor do we, so.
So as long as the entrance is perpendicular and the bridge, you know, it can jog over at an angle between the two and it'll be just fine.
And we had a question about the plan for the levee crossing. I asked about a cross, getting an updated cross-section for that and this cross-section still shows ramping and going over the levee, given the fact that we've been green-lighted, that we could make that at grade without compromising any flood mapping or flood protection is, have you had any discussions about making that at level grade instead of driving over the top of that?
Yes, and that's preferable to us, there's a little dirt work there, but in the scope of all the dirt work we're getting ready to do, that's easy enough to do and it makes it easier to put a walking path in there that's part of the school as well. So I think that's best for everybody.
I think everybody would, given the two options, having a flat approach for the fire department and for pedestrians would be preferable.
Yes.
Have you had a meeting with Evergy and a meeting of the minds about where they're putting their electrical service?
We have, so Gary, we ended up, are we in the front? We didn't end up, okay, in the backsides of the lots here.
Okay, so if we're gonna put the utility boxes in the rear easements, are those gonna be exclusively for utilities or has there been thought to how, or in some of our subdivisions, we have utility and drainage easements and that rear area is used to get water out of the, end of the block? So if, I guess I can, we can do it in a way where those are designated for utility and drainage purposes and that just preserves that option, but it leaves it to the design stage. But if I, if they're, if I leave them as utility easement only, then if you decided to do a drainage system back there, we'd have to modify it. So I just, it would make sense to make them all utility drainage easements in combination.
Agreed, and Campbell and Johnson is finishing that now, but yeah, we will pass that on. It's a great idea.
Okay, I think those were the things that we had that we wanted to get clarified and then the part that is, it's still hard for everyone to get used to is the fact that the U.S. Post Office will not allow people to place mailboxes out in front of their homes for even at-home delivery on streets and new subdivisions. And so, every subdivision has to find suitable locations for community mailboxes and so, we just have a condition that we will coordinate that with the developers. I know there was some discussion about using this area here and putting the mailboxes, you could design something where people could pull in and do that, but it's something that everyone is still getting used to, that you have to work that into your planning is, well, where are people gonna pick up their mail, so.
Yeah, we've done that previously and it is a hassle, but there is room to do it, more than enough space to put enough boxes, even if we were to cover both phases eventually, to put space in there for boxes that people can pull up to.
So, I, as I said, those were things that we wanted to get just pinned down on slightly so we were completely clear and not misinterpreting or misrepresenting anything, but with those technical issues being addressed, Centennial Road is an improved direct-access perimeter street. This plat is consistent with what you approved at the preliminary plat stage and we have just recommended those 14 conditions, which just go towards the infrastructure and future development and some of those things will be put off till we actually have infrastructure and things happening out there, but it, it's just laying those out, those expectations out at this stage. So you'll, you'll see a condition that requires a second public street connection being made before they do Phase Two and requires the interim access road to be constructed as part of Phase One. So those are just carrying over your expectations from the preliminary.
Yes.
So we think those things are completely consistent with what we worked out in March.
Okay, I'm excited. I cannot wait for this, though. I mean, the city has been waiting for these housing projects, so congratulations on that, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else got anything they'd like to add? Anybody online?
Nope.
Okay, nobody online. Any more questions for the applicant or staff?
You guys have looked over the 14 conditions, right? And you're good with those?
Correct, yes, we have.
Okay, I'll bring it back up to the commission for action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve application P-22-1A with the 14 conditions on page 13 and 14 of the staff report.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That carries 5-0. Thank you.
For the benefits of the applicants, this will go to the city commission on the 22nd of August and that will also include second reading of the ordinance rezoning your properties, if you have your zoning in place.
Any unfinished business or anything, Dean?
I don't, I guess we have a couple things to, just to share and I can't, we have a new planner that's gonna come on board and start on August 22nd.
Yay.
And most welcome addition to help Dustin and I and maybe help some of these things. What we're finding is our promised review schedules are very tight. And so, from application time to when we bring it to you, and so, most of those essentially requires that applications be near perfect or not have any changes. requires that applications be near perfect or not have any changes to them. And when, if you have a change or something that's a, an additional submittal, sometimes it, it comes too late to, to do anything with in, in terms of our packet. So, we think by having that help and additional distribution of workload, we can do, we can divide it up among more people and serve you and serve our constituents better. And then the city commission also authorized us to add an additional planning position. And we have an offer out to a fourth planner who has quite a bit of experience. And so, just, we, you're focused on the planning commission, but we also have a downtown design review board, a heritage commission, and a board of zoning appeals who all are doing different things. And so by having the correct number of planners, we can balance out serving all those roles and not short-change the downtown design review group or the heritage commission and, and give all of our boards the kind of support they need. So, we're kind of excited about that. And probably at our September 6th meeting, we'll have a new planner that we can introduce to you.
Well deserved. Are we any closer to getting our other board member?
Well, there's, there's two things we're trying to figure out. And I don't, I don't know where he is in terms of renewals, but Mr. Gilmore, who's on the planning commission and also a liaison to the heritage commission, has been, he's kinda gone silent on us. And he hasn't been to a planning commission meeting for months. And he hasn't attended the heritage commission meetings that we've had and has not responded to our meeting reminders. So, the, what we have is we're in the, if you're up for renewal, we're in the expression of interest period for renewals. And then at the end of August, probably the last meeting in August, the city commission will be making appointments to all the boards and commissions. If we have the number of EOIs that we hope we have, then we should be able to get closer to nine planning commissioners. And then we're particularly struggling with the board of zoning appeals where it's a seven-member board and we have four members. In our last meeting, we couldn't take action on an application because we didn't have a quorum. And so, we are as anxious as, as you are to get those people appointed. But the, the, the deadline has come close to passing for getting expressions of interest form in. And then the appointments are generally made the last meeting in August. And then in September, we'll be having onboarding, orientation, training, both for existing and new members to get everybody trained up. Our hope is that we, we figure out what Mr. Gilmore's status is and then get ourselves closer to nine members.
Okay.
I will add that Mr. Gilmore's term is expiring this year. So if he did not put in an EOI, his spot will be open, so. And he didn't respond to that email either.
So, he, his term expiring, he will be replaced. And then your biggest challenge will be finding a volunteer to serve on the heritage commission in his place. But that's, that's the biggest problem we have right now. It's just not, it's not good service to our, our applicants if we try to hold a board meeting and we can't vote on their item because we don't have a quorum. That's just not good. So, we're, we need to get, get all of our boards and commissions to have enough people on them so that we can do good work.
So I don't see anybody out there for public forum? Nobody online wants to say anything? I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. And I'm sorry that I was not at the first part of the meeting.